Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Tonight is a very special evening indeed, as we turn the page on our city's history, over 100 years, and begin to write a new chapter. As with all City Commission Meetings, we are here to conduct first and foremost the business of the Commission. But tonight, we are also here to celebrate and honor the swearing in of the next Commissioner of District One, Angela Cruz, the next Commissioner of District Three, Thomas Turkin, and myself, Ty Penzerga, as your next Mayor. We thank all of our friends and supporters, our families, and all members of the community who are here to witness this essential hallmark of our democracy: the orderly transition of government. As Mayor and Chair of these Commission Meetings, I remind the public and my colleagues that it is my duty to conduct fair, deliberate, and efficient meetings. In furtherance of that mission, and to ensure that all voices are heard and protected, I will uphold and strictly enforce rules of conduct and decorum in accordance with our city's decorum ordinance and of Florida Statute 871.01. Disruptive behavior will receive one warning, and should disruptions continue, the Sergeant-at-Arms will be directed to take appropriate measures. If you are asked to leave, you will not be readmitted to the chambers. Order will be maintained at all times, so that the rights of all individuals may be protected and we, the members of the Commission, may conduct the business of the city. We will begin tonight's meeting with first an announcement from our City Clerk regarding the certification of the elections' results. And we will begin the swearing-in process first with myself, then with Angela Cruz, and finally with Thomas Turkin. After which, I will present plaques to represent our gratitude for our outgoing Mayor and Commissioners for their years of service, dedication, and commitment to our city. And after all of that has concluded, we will proceed to conduct the regular business of the Commission. Madam Clerk, please begin with your announcement.
Crystal Gibson, City Clerk. The city received certified election results from the Palm Beach County Supervisor Elections for the March 8, 2022 election. For the mayoral seat, Ty Penzerga won with 57.47% of the vote. For City Commissioner, District One, Angela Cruz won with 62.28% of the vote. And for City Commissioner, District Three, a runoff election was warranted because no candidate received more than 50% plus one of the vote. On March 22, 2022, the city held a runoff election, and we received certified election results from the Palm Beach County Supervisor Elections Office. Thomas Turkin won with 52.86% of the vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will begin with the swearing-in, and I will be the first to go, and I'm going to ask our friend, State Attorney Dave Ehrenberg, to swear me in. I will come down. I'm joined here by my mother, so, alright. Proud mom.
Thank you. Thank you. It is a real honor to be part of this, and, Mr. Mayor, if I can call you that before it's official, you bring in energy and inclusiveness to this council, to this community, and I know that you will succeed. I mean, so many people love you, and you have a wonderful Commission here. So I know that this is the first of many successful days for you. But just keep in mind, as a veteran in the world of politics, first, you get sworn in, then you get sworn at.
I'm familiar.
Alright, well with that, you're sure you want to go ahead with this?
Yes.
Alright, let's do it, let's do it.
All in.
Alright. Please repeat after me. "I, Ty Penzerga..."
"I, Ty Penzerga..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...or affirm..."
"Or affirm..."
"...that I will support, protect, and defend..."
"...that I will support, protect, and defend..."
"...the Constitution and Government of the United States..."
"...the Constitution and Government of the United States..."
"...the state of Florida..."
"...the state of Florida..."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"...that I am duly qualified..."
"...that I am duly qualified..."
"...to hold office..."
"...that I am duly qualified to hold office..."
"...under the Constitution..."
"...under the Constitution..."
"...and laws of the state..."
"...and laws of the state..."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"...and that I will well..."
"...that I will well..."
"...and faithfully perform..."
"...and faithfully perform..."
"...the duties of Mayor..."
"...the duties of Mayor..."
"...at large..."
"...at large..."
"...of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida..."
"...of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida."
Congratulations!
I will reserve my comments after everyone has been sworn in. So next, I would like to call on Angela Cruz. Come on down.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Angela Cruz..."
"I, Angela Cruz..."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear, is it solemn? Hello?
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. "I, Angela Cruz..."
"I, Angela Cruz..."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"...that I will support, protect, and defend..."
"That I will support, protect, and defend..."
"...the Constitution and Government..."
"The Constitution and Government..."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States..."
"...the state of Florida..."
"The state of Florida..."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"And the city of Boynton."
"...that I am duly qualified to hold office..."
"That I am duly qualified to hold office..."
"...under the Constitution and laws..."
"Under the Constitution and laws..."
"...of the state and the city of Boynton Beach..."
"Of the state and the city of Boynton."
"...and that I will well and faithfully perform..."
"And that I will well and faithfully perform..."
"...the duties of Commissioner, District One..."
"The duties of Commissioner, District One."
"...of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida."
"Of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida."
Congratulations.
So help me God.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Thomas Turkin..."
"I, Thomas Turkin."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"...that I will support, protect, and defend..."
"That I will support, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and Government..."
"The Constitution and Government."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...the state of Florida..."
"State of Florida."
"...and the city of Boynton Beach."
"And the city of Boynton Beach."
"...that I am duly qualified to hold office..."
"That I am duly qualified to hold office."
"...under the Constitution and laws..."
"Under the Constitution and laws."
"...of the state and the city of Boynton Beach."
"Of the state and the city of Boynton Beach."
"...and that I will well and faithfully perform..."
"And I will well and faithfully perform."
"...the duties of Commissioner, District Three..."
"The duties of Commissioner, District Three."
"...of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida."
"Of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida."
Congratulations.
At this time, we would like to thank the service of our predecessors who have brought us forward to this stage in our city's history. I'd like to begin by conferring a plaque of gratitude for all their years of tireless service, dedication to our city, beginning with my friend, Justin Katz. Thank you so much, Justin, for all that you have done.
Alright, thank you very much, Mayor Penzerga. Thank you all for coming here tonight. Obviously, none of you are here for me, you are here for the new elected officials, and I want to wish them the best of luck. I've had the privilege of serving on this Commission for six years. Prior to serving in this Commission, and for the first year I did, I was a high school government teacher, so I got to talk and teach about government, American government, federalism, our Constitution, local and state government, to kids for a decade. And then I got to live that experience in this small but simultaneously massive way by being elected and representing members not just of District One, but the entire city at large in my time on the dais. With that, I'm appreciative of my time. I'm appreciative of all the success that myself and my fellow Commissioners throughout the years had, and I look forward to seeing this new Commission, this new Mayor and two Commissioners, build on that success and continue to improve the city of Boynton Beach. I think honestly that the perception of Boynton Beach over time has improved dramatically. The city has grown, the opportunities are here like they have never been before, and this next Commission will be able to continue to build and launch the city further into a successful future. So with that, I want to thank everybody, staff, our law enforcement officers and first responders, all of our employees from department heads down to the newest rank-and-file employee. They make the city run, and this is a great city, and I hope you believe that too. Thank you all very much.
This person continues to blow me away every day. I learned something more about her as time goes on, and what I have seen is that she is formidable. She's wise, and she's a model for other women who want to be in office someday. I'd like to call up my friend, Christina Romulus. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I will not cry. I'm going to start with saying that first and foremost. You all are here as witnesses, and please keep me accountable. I will not cry. Right, right, right? Okay. So, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Ty Penzerga, congratulations. I want to thank my family that's here with me and that's been with me on this journey every step of the way, including this one, who never even had a choice. He was on the campaign trail with me in my stomach. So for any of you who know my story, when I ran for office, I was pregnant with this little guy here, and this one, who's nearly my height now, was two. And now, six years later, to know that he's going to be six on April 8th. I track how long I've been on the Commission by his birthday. Yep, him, yep. He'll be six on April 8th, and, yeah, three, he's counting down. He's counting down. Smart one there, that one. It's been a journey of a lifetime, and I just, I think of the reason that I chose to ran in this city is because I love this city and I love our community and what we stand for as a city and as a people, and I am proud to know that we have a Commission that will further that mindset and that legacy. I'm proud of the last six years that I've served here, of the people that I've met and that I've been able to just learn from. I thank my mentors, Mac Bernard, Al Jaket, Judy Sineas. These are individuals who believed in me way before I knew anything about what I was doing. I want to thank the people who got on the ground with me when I was knocking on those doors as a super uber-pregnant woman. Our Fire and PD guys, I see you guys here, I want to thank you guys so much, because y'all believed in my vision for a better Boynton Beach and for a city that we all could feel included and welcome in. And so you guys went out there and knocked on those doors with me. I'm pretty sure that I thought I was going to go into preterm labor, and so did everybody else, because of how many doors we knocked on in my first race. But this little guy was stubborn, and he decided to wait until three weeks after his due date to come out. But the worth was, the wait was well worth it, because over these last six years, watching him grow up and watching the city grow up, it's been truly an honor, and it's been the pleasure of my life. I look at the changes that we've made here in the city of Boynton Beach, not just in the landscape, which obviously is clear as you all sit in this building today. This was one of the first decisions that I was able to make and see it come to fruition. Very, very proud of that, that tangible feel that you feel today of sitting in this building, that was part of a very long vision that came to reality, but also the intangibles, the things that you may not see. The fact that we are an inclusive city that has multiple languages being interpreted for individuals who need help and support, not only in spoken languages, but also in sign language. We have individuals who come from all types of backgrounds, all walks of life, all career sets, all professions, who work and make this city run. I want to thank all the staff who have made me look good for the last six years. Lori, Andrew, I'm not going to name the others because you're all amazing. Mike Grumpf, who I still love, even though I know him and I have gone head-to-head on things before, because of his just intelligence, I'm like, Mike, please, help me understand, what are you saying? So we have just amazing staff who are dedicated to their work, and this is why this city works, this is why this city runs the way it does. So I'm grateful to be here. I thank all my supporters and those who weren't my supporters. Even if you didn't vote for me, even if you didn't really like what I stood for while I was in office, I still thank you because that means you cared about this city, you wanted to help make this city better, and I partnered with you, whether pro or against, to help do that. So I'm grateful, I want to stop talking, I kept my promise, I did not cry. And I just want to thank my husband, who's been my supporter, and, okay, I will cry now, because he's been with me every step of this process. He's been with me every step of this process and has not let me falter at all, not once. He's had my back, no matter what. He's my high school sweetheart. We met when I was 15 and he was 16, and he's still been here. Still stuck it out with me. 12 years of marriage and 18 years of dating later, he's still here, two kids and a whole city after. He's still here. So I just want to thank him, I want to thank my family, my mom, who's no longer here with us, but I know she's very proud, and my father, who came to America as an immigrant, had no idea that his daughter would become the City Commissioner of one of the biggest cities in South Florida. It's something that I'm very proud of, to maintain that legacy and to advance his legacy. As a Haitian-American woman, I want to thank my community, because it's my community that put me here, and without them, I wouldn't have been a Commissioner. And I want to thank my community for holding me up and having my back and supporting me all these years. And by my community, I mean every single person who's voted and every single person who's knocked on doors, who's picked up a phone call, who's done anything to support me being here. The seat was never mine, it was always yours, and now I hand it back, and I ask for you to continue to take care of this great city that we all love dear. So thank you all. I look forward to being here as a resident now of Boynton Beach, but I will always be available to serve in any way that you need me. Thank you so much.
Christina, number one, we all hope to find the love that you have found. Number two, I'm going to keep you to that promise, we're going to call on you to serve and keep serving, we're going to need your help. The next person is someone whose shoes I could never truly fill. That would be our Mayor, Stephen Grant. Stephen has done things that I can only wish I could do. And, you know, you look at where the city was before it came, and you look at where it is today, and there is no question, no question, that he has poured his life and soul into being a Mayor and serving the residents, no question. For that, I thank him, and we are all grateful for the service that you have given to all of us. Thank you, Mayor Grant.
So for those that would like to know, it's presented to Stephen B. Grant with sincere appreciation for your years of service to the residents of the city of Boynton Beach as Mayor-at-Large, 2016-2022. You know, where I'd like to begin is first off by thanking my fellow Commissioners as my time as Mayor. I'm glad to see that we have, we had Commissioner Canelo, Commissioner Katz, Commissioner Romulus, Commissioner Hay, and also Commissioner McCray. They were truly the people that helped me make the better Boynton Beach. And when I became a Mayor, I had the vision that the city should be a family-friendly, farming, fishing city, because that's what we were 100 years ago. And so in the 21st century, that means we have good homes, good jobs, great schools, wonderful places to eat, and fun activities. And looking at this City Hall, looking at our library, our saving the historic high school, we truly have given the city a family-friendly atmosphere for another 100 years. You know, as I was campaigning, I had two family members with me that are no longer here, that I'd like to acknowledge. Many of you knew me as I was walking around the city, my Australian shepherd Daisy. And at home, that was always there to greet me, was my Maine Coon cat, Milo. And now, my family has definitely gotten a lot bigger, with my wife Jenna, my daughter Estee, my dogs now, Daphne and George, my new cats, Snickers. And that's where Boynton Beach needs to be. It needs to be a family, it needs to be a community. So I won't have the opportunity to disclose the things that I've done this past few weeks, but one of the things that I did is I was able to give a citation to a centenarian, and I asked him, what was life like back in the Depression? And he told me that it wasn't as bad as people say it was, is because the community stuck together and they helped each other out. And I feel that was the most important part, is that we are all here together to make a better Boynton Beach. My next question was, well, how did you live to 100 years old? He said, find a good dance partner. And so that's where I'm leaving you off. I hopefully, and I'm hopeful that the next Commission will continue the success that my Commission has had, administration. I want to thank all of the staff, Lori, our city attorneys, Andrew, Crystal, and all the staff that are no longer here with us, our police, our fire, our sanitation, our water utility, our librarians, our IT staff, our Clerk's Department, our Parks and Recreation, our Public Works, our Building Department, our front staff, there's so much that makes the city of Boynton Beach the city of Boynton Beach. And that's where we are here together to make sure that we are making the Boynton Beach better each and every day. So thank you so much. Hopefully, it was a three-minute speech.
Now that the Commission has been seated, Madam Clerk, please begin the roll call.
Mayor Ty Penzerga.
I am present.
Ms. Mayor Woodrow L. Hay.
Present.
Commissioner Angela Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas Turkin.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we will ask for an invocation by Pastor Bob Bender from Christ Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay. Please stand for the invocation.
Almighty God, we thank you so much for this amazing city. We thank you for the opportunity we have to have breath in our body, and we pray, God, that you would be able to give wisdom, discernment, grace, kindness, and humility to every one of the newly-elected officials and to all who stand in forms of leadership within this great city. And we pray that you would continue to give us the insight, creativity, and ability to form what needs to happen to bring a community of love and kindness and purpose, so that the next generations step into a better future than even what we experience today. We ask for your favor and for your anointing, and we say thank you, God. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to their Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Approval, are there any additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda? I will begin. I have a request from the City Manager to make a statement. I'd like to add that under 2B, right after informational items by members of the Commission. As we all know, we will soon be appointing a replacement for me in District Four, and knowing that, I'd like to table Items 5B, C, D, E, as well as Item 5G. These are all items I believe that the new Commissioner should also have the opportunity to partake in the discussions and decision-making. I would also like to ask that we remove all items under Future Agenda, 13s A through F. This is a new Commission, and I believe it is up to us as a new body to decide what our future Agenda item is.
to decide what our future agenda items will be. I would also like to request that we move up public hearing. Public hearing items are 8A through C. And we move that up right after public comments. We're moving up public hearing 8A through C, right after public comments. We'll do it after, after public audience. And afterwards, I would like to request, and I'm going to require commission input here. You know, it's so important for us to conduct these meetings and to conduct the business of the city in a timely fashion. I think we can all agree that no decision should be made 11, 12, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. We've got to come, we've got to bring that to an end. And so what I'd like to do, just to ensure that we have enough time to actually get through the business, is we limit the duration of public comments from perhaps one to two hours initially. And if we still require more time for additional public comments, we can amend the agenda later on and open a second public comment period after legal. So this way, there is a period where people can comment, we will conduct the business, and if necessary, we can return to public comments. So these are the items of my requests. Are there any other amendments?
Yes, Mayor Pennsor. Just commenting on your public audience of one or two hours. I think we just need to nail it down and say one hour. And then if we need more time, then we would address that at that time. The rest of them, I totally agree with.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else from the other members?
Hour.
All right. Agreed to one hour it is. Are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor Pennsor, does this include any future agenda items?
Yes, we can include items for future agenda or even new business. We can amend the agenda in any way we'd like.
Sure. I'd like to, and correct me.
I will help you. I'm here for you guys.
I move, I move that we vote on an RFP for acquiring the sheriff's office of Palm Beach County.
Let us put that under new business. Is that all right with you?
Sure.
All right. So what we have here is a proposal to add a discussion for a merger with PBSO, to request for a proposal. All right. Are there anything else? Hearing, no other additions or deletions or corrections. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
All right. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Hay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Turkin on the approval of the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. Let's go by district number order. Commissioner Cruz, would you like to begin any informational items or disclosures?
I met with Andrew Miller regarding 1320 property. That would be my, yeah, Bradley Miller. That would be my only disclosure.
All right. Moving on to Vice Mayor Hay of District 2.
I would like to say that on this past Thursday, I had the pleasure of working with Feeding South Florida. And we had over 900 that we helped. I think that was outstanding. I do have a comment or observation, Mayor. Since we have only four up here, I just let it be known that if it comes to a 2-2 split, the motion fails.
That is correct. Understood. Commissioner, okay. Commissioner Turkin, any informational items or disclosure that you'd like to make?
I spoke with Dr. Snyder in terms of 1320.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And as for myself, I've had discussions regarding 1320 South Federal, that's items 8A and B, with Mr. Bradley Miller as well. I've also had discussions with numerous residents, including Dr. Snyder, regarding the same location. For informational items, I just want to congratulate and thank Barbara Rubenstein, the musical director of the Boynton Beach Gold Coast Band. They were phenomenal. If you have not seen them, I highly encourage you to do that. I also want to thank Jim Sizik and all the organizers of the open house event at Palm Beach Leisureville. That was phenomenal. And it was so great to see all of the residents come out and check out what Leisureville had to offer. And I believe that is it for me. Yes, Vice Mayor.
As an oversight, I did, I did talk to Bradley Miller on items 8A and B. That's it.
All right. Any other additions? Sounds good. We're going to move on to 2B. This is a statement from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up to my memorandum to the commission on December, the December 26, 2021 crash. Following a three-month investigation into a December 26, 21 motor vehicle accident that resulted in the death of a 13-year-old operator of a high-performance 2022 Honda racing motorcycle, the Florida Highway Patrol has issued its traffic homicide investigation report. The Florida Highway Patrol report found that based on the totality of the investigation, the accident occurred while the motorcycle operator was driving recklessly at approximately 85 miles per hour and unlawfully fleeing an attempted traffic stop initiated by a Boynton Beach police officer. There was no physical contact between the police officer's vehicle and the motorcycle, the Florida Highway Patrol report found. The Florida Highway Patrol report closing status states, this investigation is complete and no charges shall be filed because the at-fault person expired as a result of the crash. Now that the FHP traffic homicide investigation is completed, the Boynton Beach Police Department will conduct an internal affairs investigation to determine if any police department policies were violated by any police, excuse me, Boynton Beach law enforcement officer involved in this incident. The city of Boynton Beach will not be issuing status reports regarding the internal affairs investigation as all information obtained pursuant to the internal affairs investigation is confidential and exempt from the provisions of Florida statute 119.07, correns 1, close correns, Florida Public Records law. Until the investigation ceases to be active or until the chief of police provides written notice to the officer, who is the subject of the complaint, either personally or by mail, that the agency has either done one of two things. One, concluded the investigation with a finding not to proceed with disciplinary action or file charges. Or two, concluded the investigation with a finding to proceed with disciplinary action or to file charges. Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to announcements, community, and special events and presentations, beginning with item 3A. This item has been previously tabled. I'd like to request a motion to remove from the table 3A.
Motion to remove.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We need a second to remove item 3A from the table. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Hay. We have a second from Commissioner Turkin. All those in favor of removing item 3A from the table say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Now that the item has been removed from the table, I hereby declare the position of District 4 Commissioner vacant. Madam Clerk, could you inform us as to how a resident would go about applying to be considered to be the next District 4 Commissioner?
Yes, Crystal Gibson, City Clerk. To qualify for an appointment, an individual must be an elector not less than 21 years of age, who has resided in District 4 for not less than one year prior to the date of the appointment. And all interested in qualified individuals who wish to be considered for appointment should submit to the city clerk prior to noon on April 12, 2022, a letter of interest setting forth the applicant's qualifications to serve as a city commissioner, a completed and signed city advisory board application, a signed city residency statement form, and evidence of meeting the one-year residency requirement such as a driver's license, a voter registration card, residential property deed or lease, or other similar documents. And then notwithstanding the April 12 deadline, the city commission reserves the right to review other qualified individuals until such time as an appointment is made. That would be following the protocol that the city commission followed in 2018, the last time a vacancy was filled.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I distinctly recall applying for that position several years ago. I was one of those individuals. Vice Mayor Hay.
Just a question for the clerk and for the informational item for the public. What happens if this commission cannot select a candidate from the list that has been presented to us?
Our city charter states that if the, if the commission is unable to agree upon the selection of commissioner to fill the vacancy, after two regular meetings have been held, the city commission shall call a special election for that purpose.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Moving on to item 3B, the development department staff will provide the city commission an update on the Sages Gov e-permitting project implementation. Now, this item was previously tabled, so I'd first like to request a motion to remove item 3B from the table. May I have that motion?
Motion to remove from table.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Temple?
Hi, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, members of the city commission, staff, members of the public. I'm very pleased to be here this evening, representing my fine development team. And thank you for the opportunity to run through our Sages Gov implementation, which completely transformed how we conduct business on our first floor in our building department. Salika is going to be, our development services manager is going to be leading us in tonight's, in tonight's presentation. And although this, this presentation, you know, puts a bow and wraps up a great implementation, the hard work continues on a daily basis by our team to ensure that we are continuing to streamline our processes. And as Salika moves through her presentation, I just want everybody to remember and keep in mind, as we went through this implementation, we were undergoing a pandemic and some very difficult and challenging times using two different systems in order to ensure that we were continuing to deliver services to our residents. And in addition, our workloads never, never slowed down during the pandemic. So we were operating at full speed during the entire implementation. So without further ado, I'll introduce Ms. Salika Brown. And I do want to highlight and thank all the members of our greater development team that played a part on this very successful implementation. And they range from all kinds of different departments, but in particular, the core members of our team that, that are probably listening in tonight, Deborah, Remy, Michael B., our building official, John Kootzman, Salika, our ITS department. I really appreciate all their hard work and I think you'll be excited what you see and I think you'll be very pleased with what you'll see in the future. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone in their respective places. My name is Salika Brown. I'm the Development Services Manager. I'm tasked with oversight of our application technicians, our application specialists, and our business compliance officer. We process all of the administrative functions for the building department, as well as local business tax receipts and certificate of use and occupancy. I work in conjunction with our building official, Mr. John Kootzman. And he manages our technical staff, which would include our plans examiners and building inspectors. So our ultimate task is life safety and making sure that the public is safe when constructing or adding or doing any additions to buildings. I will go ahead and ask for the next slide to come up. So our Sages Gov is our newest resource, a tool for processing permit applications. It is a one-stop shop that allows us to be paper-free, which is definitely important, given the current circumstances of the pandemic. Our staff used to process, I would say, thousands, hundreds of thousands of pieces of paper each day. So this makes it a much more safer environment for the public as well as our staff. Next slide, please. Our previous city commission approved the Sages Gov in September of 2020. Over that period, it took us about one year and six months to fully implement the software. We did a soft launch in May of 2021 where we started the first phase, which would include applications to the middle, document uploads, and plan reviews. We still used our old system, which is a much older mundane system, which is fragmented, to do the later part, which is payments, inspections, and issue the actual permits. Next slide, please. This slide talks about some of the benefits that we have with Sages Gov, which basically highlights that it is more efficient, it's more user-friendly, it decreased the fragmentation abundantly compared to our previous system that took us much more time to process an application from the time it was submitted all the way through issuance. The new software is automated, so it houses much of the functions that we need in order to process permits. It has easier capability for project management for some of our larger projects that may be more complex in nature. We're also able to do custom reports so that we can identify benchmarks and areas of opportunity. Next slide, please. Just to give you a little synopsis of what our previous system curtailed, pre-pandemic, everything was paper. So all the plans came in and we had to put them in one system. We used another system to apply payment and another system to print the permits ultimately. When the pandemic hit us, we found ourselves straggling to try to find a way to become electronic. So it was piecemealed, not efficient for ourselves as well as our customers. So with Sages Gov, it is an opportunity for us to house all of those different functionalities within one software. So it's seamless and it's much more efficient. Next slide, please. This gives you a snippet, it's pretty small up here, but it kind of gives you a snippet of what the Sages Gov looks like. It uses, the software developer used a lot of color codes in order for us to identify quickly as to where the permit process is, the permit application is in the process. Typically, this is a much more concise system where we can see the application status, where it's in review, where the permit status is, as well as where it is for the inspections. We're also able to have a history system that actually gives us a quick synopsis as to what the trajectory has been for the project. And we can actually see and download documents directly from this screen. Next slide. Just to give you a little idea of how we have operated as far as trends, this particular chart starts back in October of 2021 and it compares each the same year and the following year, the same month. So as you can see, in October of 2021, in the old system, we processed 661 permits. And then in 2021, we processed 701 permits for the same time using the Sages software. If you see in December and January and February, we basically doubled the amount of permits that we processed using the new system, which proves that the productivity has increased. And in all times, it's actually decreased the amount of time that it's taken us to process those permits, which I'll show you in the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of our dashboard, which allows us the capability to use preloaded stock reports or either custom-built reports based on algorithms or filters, based on rules that we use to derive our desired outputs. We have a dropdown that kind of gauges in that chart. It'll tell us the total amount of applications we've received and it breaks it down by application type. So it kind of gives us a quick snippet of where we are operating at that current time. Next slide, please. Sages Gov has excellent project management capabilities. Owners can be notified via email each time the status of their application changes, even if they hired a contractor. This is helpful because it allows homeowners to follow their project in real time without much effort. It also has a tool called collaborators, which allows us to give that homeowner or another contractor access to the files, either read-only or full access, depending on their ties to the project. Sages Gov offers us a much more, better opportunity to manage our projects. And this is important because we can assign coordinators. And those people can actually make sure that they are following the project in case there are any hiccups and be able to mitigate customers through that process. Next slide, please. Sages Gov also has excellent inspection capabilities. We can result real-time in the field and also upload inspection windows for customers. Also upload pictures from the field. It allows us to just be much more uh hands-on and, and more real-time as it relates to the customers being able to schedule subsequent permits, uh inspections, so that we can do it right there in the field. They don't have to wait for us to come back to the office and upload those uh results then. Next slide. This is one of the slides that I wanted to point out and, and to draw the most attention to. We use a data sample period of Janu- February fifteenth, January, February first through the fifteenth of twenty twenty-one, and February first through the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. What this does is allow us to use, to look at each system when we were processing using our old system versus our new system. So what we did was we took single-discipline permit applications, which would include re-roofs, shutters, windows and doors, air conditioner changeouts, and water heater changeouts. For the same period last year, we processed fifty-one applications. It took us on average of thirty-five days to process those applications. This year, using the same sto- the new software, we processed a hundred and thirty-eight applications, and it took us on average of ten days to process those applications. So we almost quadrupled the amount of permits we issued, and we more than cut it down by a third. Next slide, please. Some of our future stages initiatives is to expand the program, to expand to planning and zoning applications, engineering applications, utilities applications, business tax receipt applications, and instant permits we have already attained. That was released on uh April first, and we have successfully issued our first permit. Um, this open, only open for air conditioning contractors and water plumbing contractors to apply for water heater and air conditioning changeouts. The applicant will apply for the permit, and once they pay for the permit, the permit is automatically issued as soon as they apply. So this is, we're very proud of this. This is going to cut down the amount of time that it takes for people to get their permits, and also cut down on the amount of time that staff takes to review those applications. And we also want to expand in our fire life safety for outside cities and our towns. Next slide, please. This is just a snippet of our testimonials from some of our customers explaining um how happy they are with utilizing Sages for their application functions. We have um a testimony from Delray Screen, which is one of our customers that pulls a large amount of permits. Lennar Florida have a tap for humanity, as well as Hunter's Run. And we have many, many more. Um, the customers immediately felt the uh improvement of the new system, and they are very grateful for it. Next slide, please. And um as a team, we wanted to thank Patsy Grissom, who was our project manager on this um project, John Kootzman, our building official, myself, Deborah Mazaikis, Michael Belluyat, Savan Remy, and our I T Services Department for helping us implement and work out any of obstacles with the software. Thank you.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Temple, Mr. Temple, thank you so much for that presentation and all the hard work that you put into making this happen. From the data that we can see, clearly we are in the right direction, and I just want to say uh, in the campaign process, the, the topic of permitting keeps coming up over and over and over again. My question to both of you is, what more can we be doing uh to improve this process, to expedite these permits? Uh, relatedly, what is the most common cause of delay?
Just off of firsthand experience, I would say the most common delay is the public's misunderstanding of the system, the laws, and where we are in the process. We have a tedious job because we have responsibility to uphold public, the law, whereas it relates to public health and safety. But we also have the white glove where we're trying to deliver the most exceptional customer service. And oftentimes, we're not able to get, give the permit instantly if all of the red flags are not checked off, so meaning it hasn't made it successfully through plan review. Um, all of the individuals reviewing those plans are licensed professionals through the state of Florida, so they have responsibility to uphold the law as it relates to the Florida Building Code or the electrical standards or even the fire code. So what makes it difficult is that people, time is money, and it, the longer it takes, and the more people we have applying for permits, it puts, you know, uh, uh, burden on our staff sometimes because we're getting in more than we can get out at sometimes, and then we're trying to deliver that exceptional customer service at the same time, so it takes us more time to explain those laws to people so that they can get through the process.
Thank you, and going back to my original question, what more can we be doing? For example, where are we with staffing? Uh, do we have enough people processing? Are we recruiting? Where are we on that topic?
Mayor, uh, to your question, so uh, so recruitment is, is obviously a challenge um across the country and, and certainly in, in, in our industry. Uh, we've made a lot of headway in our recruiting. Uh, we actually, just this week, our deputy building official uh finally started after more than a year of recruit, recruiting for that position. Uh, we have another plumbing and mechanical inspector, plans examiner, that's uh, that's, that's coming on board uh in the next couple of weeks, so we, I think we have one vacancy uh remaining. Um, but, you know, as, as Salika's shown, you know, when she talks about the instant permit uh for A C changeouts and water heaters for, for licensed contractors, um, you know, she, you know, she, she, she did a great job explaining it, but really, it's, it's a lot more, uh, it's really a lot more to it. The, that process was built out internally by our, by our staff. We didn't have to go to the vendor and build out a process and a workflow for us. That was done by our application specialist in-house, saving us thousands of dollars and uh creating just an immediate benefit for folks. Your A C goes down uh on a weekend, your contractor could apply for the permit on Saturday, no staff here, and get the permit to replace the water heater over the weekend, not have to wait for City Hall to open.
Excellent.
So those are the types of things that, the capabilities that the system provides, where we're able to have administrator privileges, create workflows, analyze our workflows, make adjustments, pivot, um, and that's exactly what we plan on doing as we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from staff or members of the commission? Let's begin with Vice Mayor Hay. You're recognized.
Uh, yes, uh, just, are we able to um, let, let me say, are, are our customers able to externally find out the status of a permitting, where, where it stands, where they are uh with this system?
Ye- yes. Um, Vice Mayor Hay, they are able to log into their Sages Gov account, and they can get real-time updates on the status of their application permit. And just to piggyback off of Mayor Pinserga's question, we also have quarterly building appointment workshops where we are trying to bridge that gap with the public and educate them on our current processes with the new software. Um, give them access to us and that be able to ask questions about how to utilize our system. We also have how-to videos on our website that we're constantly trying to turn over and create new content to stay up above the curve of demand for that system. Um, just to try to answer the questions, and we kind of streamline that based on the amount of, the types of questions we receive on the phones. Um, so I think we have a pretty good grip on that, and that, and we'll hope to see it get much, much better in the near future, because our last meeting, we had seventy um registrants for the work, building appointment workshop, and we had thirty-nine participants that stayed on the entire duration of that workshop, so I would say that that's really good.
And, and there's, there's other, there's other great benefits to having a more efficient software, right? When we started on this journey, uh, our folks downstairs were answering fifty percent of their phone calls. The last six months, they've been answering more than ninety-two percent of their phone calls, right? So there's a direct correlation. We're able to provide much better uh customer service and response times, because we're not doing mundane tasks, and we're, we're operating much more efficiently.
So by saying that, I, I take it that we have not reduced uh our personnel, because there's always more for them to do
Exactly.
within a system like that. We can just turn around things uh much faster.
Exactly.
And uh, as been already stated, that's one of the biggest complaint that I hear about uh the, the length of time that it takes to get uh permits and everything. So I'm just uh excited about this new system and uh, uh, good job.
Thank you very much. And we won't be able to, as much as we would love to eliminate all, all complaints and permitting, it's not unique to, to Boynton Beach, trust me, but we're going to do, I guarantee you that over the next uh year, couple of months, as it continues on, those complaints are going to dwindle down to, to very, very, very small. Remember, we, we issue more than ten thousand permits a year. Right? So we're a very busy, very busy department.
Commissioner Turkin, I saw your hand.
Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you for this. This is going to be great. I know a lot of people are going to be happy about this. Um, so is there a way, and I, you, you answered one of my questions as far as the how-to videos. For those who maybe aren't savvy with technology, do we have someone that can assist them here in the city? Uh, alternatives, like, I, I may have missed that, so forgive me if I did.
Great question, Commissioner.
Yes, we do have a kiosk in our lobby, and all of our application technicians, as well as staff, will come out and help uh customers apply for permits online. We even have a scanner on our um desktop there to be able to scan, you know, eight and a half by eleven, but if we, they have larger plans. Um, contractors can't submit paper, but the owner builders can.
That's great. And are we able to send a notice out about that? Are we able to advertise that?
Although, yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay.
Through our, through our, through our newsletters, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, or, and I don't know if we can do a mail or, you know, what that looks like, but I know there's, you know, a lot of residents that may not even know that this exists, and if they don't know it exists, how are they going to figure out, you know, who to go to? Um, so I think if we can advertise that, that'd be great.
Definitely.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Yeah, that was my question. I was going to ask for the quarterly, for the quarterly workshops, how do you advertise those to the public?
So those are, our marketing team helps us out tremendously with that. We, we have, within the department, have our own database uh of folks that do business uh with us, so we do email blast uh to them. Uh, but, but mainly, we rely on our marketing folks, uh, to help push that out on social media and through the newsletter.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to both of you.
Thank you very much.
As you can see from the questions, this is something that's extremely important to all of us.
Definitely. Thank you very much.
Moving on to announcement by our economic development manager, John Durgan, regarding the Boynton Beach Turn the Tables internship and career expo on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, John Durgan, Economic Development Manager. The city is excited to announce that we have partnered with Path to College and Career Source Palm Beach County to host Turn the Tables internship and career expo on Wednesday, May eleventh, from two thirty P M to five thirty P M at the Arts and Cultural Center, which is located at one twenty-five East Ocean Avenue in the auditorium on the second floor. Now, this expo is geared towards high school students interested in both paid and unpaid internship opportunities in a variety of industries with the goal of connecting those students to internship opportunities that expose them to potential careers. We are currently seeking employers that have internship opportunities available that would like to participate in the expo. We are working as a team to finalize the flyer for the event, and we have also dedicated a webpage on the city's website where you can find more information on the event and have both students and potential employers register uh to a- attend the event. And students, um, walk-ups will, will be welcome for students as well. Um, that webpage can be found at W W W dot Boynton dash beach dot org slash internship dash fair. And for any questions a- anybody may have, they can always contact me, John Durgan, at five six one seven four two six zero one four. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you so much, John. And moving on to item three D. Did I hear some echo? Uh, three D Tyler Jazenski, Program Manager of Volunteers for Best Buddies Palm Beach, and Nadine Cassidy, Best Buddies Chapter President for Park Vista High School, will announce the twenty twenty-two Best Buddies Friendship Walk and discuss the peer buddy one-to-one friendship. Thank you so much to both of you. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you so much. Good afternoon. I would first like to thank the city for inviting Best Buddies to speak today. My name is Tyler Jazenski. I am the Program Manager of Volunteers for Palm Beach. Best Buddies is an international nonprofit with four different pillars. One, to provide one-to-one friendships for in, individuals with special needs, leadership development skills, employment opportunities, and self-sufficient housing. Today, I would like to invite the city to our upcoming event called the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. The walk will take place Saturday, April thirtieth, eight thirty A M at the ballpark of the Palm Beaches. Today, we have sixty-one different teams and have raised just shy of seventy thousand dollars from our one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar goal. The great city of Boynton Beach has a walk page. Registration for the race is absolutely free. And we, I have several flyers to pass out if anybody is interested today. The race proceeds help support our four pillars. And with that, I would like to introduce Nadine Cassidy, the Best Buddies Chapter President of Park Vista High School, to share with you her firsthand experience and the impact Best Buddies had on her and Park Vista.
Good evening, Mayors, Commissioners, and all else. Hello, my name is Nadine Cassidy, and I am currently a senior attending Park Vista Community High School, serving as the Best Buddies President. Best Buddies has not only changed me, but it has changed my life for the better. As you may know, Best Buddies is a nonprofit organization that creates opportunities for one-to-one friendships, integrated employment, leadership develop, leadership development, and inclusive living for individual, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, also known as N I D D. Through Best Buddies, I have made lifelong friendships with not only my buddies that have been matched along the way, but my officers, my advisors, and all of the other chapter presidents in the Palm Beach County area. With this program, I met some of my best friends, Sophia, Samantha, Samantha, Carrie, Roger, and Dylan, and so many more. I truly cannot tell you how much light they bring into my life, and I am forever grateful to see new friendships develop and form over time. Every time we have a peer buddy and buddy hang out, I see smiles, loss, and memories being made every day. And I hear from the E S C department that one student had a great day, and it was because of Best Buddies. Thank you so much for listening to my story, and I hope that you will help me continue to spread awareness about inclusion.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Inclusion is a highlight of our city, and that is something we look forward to continuing. Uh, three E announcement of the rollout of the Historic Plaque Initiative by Mike Rumpf, liaison for the Historic Resources Preservation Board. Mr. Rumpf?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Let me know if I'm too loud or too soft or voiced. I'm here to present to you, and I've got the art of doing this, uh, not only an update to the program, but narrowing down on the specific local latest achievement from the board, and that is the development of the Recognition Plaque Program. Uh, so I will take a few moments to quickly go through just kind of an overview, the taste of, of the board itself, its responsibilities and achievements, um, as well as offering a more thorough presentation uh to you, if that be your um pleasure, uh, perhaps under a dedicated agenda item in the future. But for now, just a quick overview and a summary of our latest um task that's been completed. Next slide. Just some milestones. There's many, but these are just some selected ones that are most notable, of course. Going back in nineteen seventy-nine, we received, first structure received its national recognition, being placed on National Registered Historic Places, and we all know the Boytons, Boynton Women's Club. Secondly, our second national registered property is the Boynton School, commonly known now as the um Children's Schoolhouse Museum. Uh, major milestone was the nineteen ninety-six historic site survey, which is a complete um establishment of a historic report on the city. It contained a comprehensive inventory of all sites that were greater than fifty years old and some basic information on them. It also concluded with recommendations on how to establish a historic preservation program for the city and the necessary ingredients. That process began with an ad hoc committee being established to work on some of the objectives um and components of the ultimate study. One of the recommendations was to hire a historic preservation planner to establish the program. That occurred in two thou- two thousand and eleven. In addition to establishing the ordinance, the guides, the program today. And um next milestone would have been our certified local government status, and that is the state's recognition of our historic preservation program, being the criteria and quality that they look for. Um, that was in two thousand and twelve, along with the city's first placement of a property on the local uh registry, and that being three thirty-one Northwest First Avenue, and that is uh St. Thomas Home. Um, and then why am I here tonight, taking this opportunity to give you this update that is the achievements and completion of a recognition plaque program? Uh, that is, as we all know, uh, as we visit different cities, we see small plaques on properties that are historic. Sometimes we see the oversized, large national registries, but also a lot of homes, you see the smaller uh plaque noting its um jurisdiction, and oftentimes the date of the property itself. Next slide. This project of the board began a couple of years ago, and I've had the opportunity to finish this out with them. Sample here and also there in the chambers on the desk below the dais are all three um notable samples right now. We have an oversized or large plaque for larger projects, buildings, um institutions, schools, um, and a smaller one, which is for the homes. The nineteen twenty-seven plaque that's on the slide is destined for our Boynton High School. and which is also now known as the Cultural Center. The smaller one in the slide is a sample of one that would be placed on a single-family home. That's a generic date, common to those historic structures we have that are designated or eligible for designation. And that's going to be used to promote the program to property owners who have designated properties to accept the plaque right now and help showcase the program as well as their important property. The second one, which you have on display there in the chambers, is for the Cultural Center and those we place on the buildings in the near future. This plaque, unlike traditional plaques, which we see in many cities, bronze, this one is aluminum, is durable, we think also has a lower theft quality to it and at much lower cost than the bronze items. Next slide. Again, going over a little bit of an overview and information on the board itself, overview. What is its program? What does it do? The program inventories historic assets. We designate historic properties. We promote and use as an educational component of the city our historic assets, and that has been done in the past through the city's website, historic trails, as well as special events. And I think the board would like to beef up this in the coming year, this component of the program. Certificate appropriateness reviews is what we call the board or staff's review of a permitted activity or application to affect or impact or improve or modify a designated property. Next, establish historic districts typically where there are concentrations of historic properties. Tax exemption program, and I'll go into this more in the next slide. And then maintaining our status as a certified local government, CLG, in accordance with the state requirements. Next slide. Program benefits. This is probably the most important slide, as I use this opportunity to, to grant stand, promote, and endorse those property owners with eligible properties to become or maintain their property as a designated property. There's a lot of misunderstandings about what it means to be a designated property. You think the understanding is that it, it puts chains on the property, limits what someone can do with the property. In our program, specifically the way it is written, being fairly flexible, understanding of needs, it is not the case, in fact, believe there's more benefits than there are costs to it. To the city itself, being a CLG program, it gives us grant priority. Some grants being offered by the state are only open to CLGs. Also, the non-dedicated CLGs, we almost have priority in many of those opportunities. We know that, and studies have been done on the economic value of a historic preservation program. In preserving historic properties, identifying historic properties, both visual and economic health to communities, so there's been studies done on that, what that means. That's a, that's a speech and lecture all in of itself. It promotes sustainability. We know that. Preserve materials. A lot of older buildings were built in such a way that were naturally more energy efficient. Next, tax exemption. This is really valuable for a homeowner who would like to expand or do significant improvements to their historic structure. Up to 10 years tax exemption, they would be eligible for based on appraisers, property assessments by the property appraisers office of those improvements. Exemption from codes, and this is an important one to note right now, too, because there is not only current benefits with respect to how codes and standards are applied to the properties, but the board is in the process of further amendments to our zoning regulations and the ordinance itself to increase incentives, to lessen codes that are applied to such properties. And again, to, to further promote the continued use, repair, and maintenance of such properties. Lastly, it has a benefit of education. I mean, if you can picture a streetscape without historic structures, that would naturally take away a visual aid to learning more about history, learning about architectural design, learning about people who played a role in our past. The high school across the street from us, the Cultural Center, was demolished, and it came very close to being demolished over the past several years, was not there. We wouldn't be thinking about that era of time. We wouldn't be learning about that architectural style and who played a role in that. And that's, that's really really important. Next slide. I conclude with this slide. Obviously, that was my segue into the picture on the right, which is now our bright shining historic high school. On the left is the future. This is the latest house to begin undergoing a review for historic designation on our local registry. It's a 1924 Mission House. Mize is the name that's associated with it, because one of the early owners of it is under new ownership, and they have requested designation review. As you can tell, it's obvious that this is a very tiny house. The owner moved into it. His family has grown now, and he obviously needs more space, and he's proposing expansion of the home, cleanly on the back of the house, not interfering with the visual quality and the contributing elements to its historic style on the front. And that project will benefit by some of the proposed amendments to our zoning regulations to allow it to continue and obviously be expanded on smaller lots. That concludes my quick presentation. And like I said, staff offers the opportunity to give more thorough explanation, maybe even Q and A on the program, that we highly recommend the city to continue to endorse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumpf, and thank you to all the members of the Historic Resources Preservation Board. The value is clear for historic preservation. It adds character and arm to our city, so thank you for your work. Are there any questions from members of the commission? Hearing none, we're going to move on to item F, announcement to recognize Shaping Change LLC as an Inclusion Works Business Partner. Stephanie Soplop and Ted Goodenough will make the announcement recognizing and Dr. Janesa Dominguez, President of Shaping Change.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Thank you very much. My name is Stephanie Soplop. I'm the ADA Title II Coordinator for the city of Boynton Beach. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to do this announcement. We have an Inclusion Works Business Recognition Program here in the city of Boynton Beach for our local businesses who have a BTR, a Business Tax Receipt with the city of Boynton Beach. And we recognize them for being inclusive and accessible to individuals with disabilities. So we started this program right before the pandemic, and many businesses had a lot of challenges at that time. So now we're really starting to revamp the program, and we want to recognize Shaping Change, a local behavioral business here in Boynton Beach, for being our newest member of the Inclusion Works Business Recognition Program. How the program works is we have a team of three, myself, Ted, and Beth. Beth Wagmeister is our outreach person, so she starts and does the outreach and gets the information to the businesses about this program. And then once they are interested and fill out the application, then Ted Goodenough will go ahead and help walk them through the whole process. So we are also in the process of revamping the application to simplify it, so we can get more businesses on board. But now I will let Ted Goodenough talk a little bit about his experience working with Shaping Change.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Ted Goodenough, and to keep it short, I'm Stephanie's assistant, and at my feet is Rosie, my guide dog. She got the good looks and the brains. This was, I had a hundred slideshow, but Stephanie kindly came and said, "hundred seconds." So the Inclusion Works Business Partner Recognition Program is amazing, and Shaping Change was one of the easiest to, to help get into a position so that we could recognize them. It, it's kind of like putting on an old shoe, although they're not an old shoe, they're a new business, where it's comfortable and it's easy, and they were already doing so many of the things that are in our program that it was just like, okay, let's keep going and we'll do some more. And it is just an amazing program where you get to be recognized for being inclusive in a city that loves the word inclusion. So without any further ado, and I think my hundred seconds are up, Dr. Janesa Dominguez is with us, and she's going to explain more about what they do at Shaping Change.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Janesa Dominguez, and I am so grateful to be here. We're so happy to be part of the Inclusion Works Program. The city, the Inclusion Works Program staff, and the community have been so welcoming to us. We offer behavior therapy services to individuals with autism and related disabilities and their families. And we also provide training and education to organizations in the community who are looking to be more inclusive and want to engage more with individuals and families with autism and related disabilities. So this marks our second location in South Florida, and again, we're so excited to be here and to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item G. It is my first proclamation as mayor. This was an item requested from the previous administration, and I'll continue the tradition. Item G, Proclamation for World Autism Awareness. And this proclamation will be accepted by Lisa, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Pugliese Laqua, founder of Love Serving Autism. So Lisa, let me first read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas during the month of April, we strive to promote autism awareness, inclusion, self-determination for all, and assure that each person with autism spectrum disorder is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. Whereas Love Serving Autism's mission is to expand life skills, especially functional communication through specialized therapeutic tennis instruction to increase community inclusion and independence of individuals with ASD and developmental challenges. Whereas tennis is a sport full of life's lesson, that I can attest. It teaches individuals with ASD about valuable life skills. A few life skills gained through Love Serving Autism include integrity, sportsmanship, leadership, responsibility, perseverance, and confidence. Children and adults with autism who engage in the sport of tennis can experience lifelong therapeutic benefits both on and off the tennis courts. Whereas Love Serving Autism's goal is for participants to apply their newly learned skills throughout the community, including school, workplace, social, recreational gatherings, and home settings. Now, therefore, I, Typhus Sorga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of April to be designated as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, and reaffirm that the city of Boynton Beach will continue to partner with organizations such as Love Serving Autism to provide opportunities for individuals with autism spectrum disorder and developmental challenges to fully participate in all that Boynton has to offer." Lisa, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Penzerga and the city of Boynton. It's such a wonderful opportunity to provide programming here, and thank you for being inclusive in nature and really advocating for individuals with special needs. April is Autism Awareness Month, but we're also calling it Autism Acceptance Month as well, because, you know, we're being proactive in nature and finding a way to accept others who are neurodiverse. So thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to continuing our programming. Thank you.
Item 3H, a proclamation recognizing April 3rd through 9th, 2022 as National Library Week. Library Director Craig Clark will accept the proclamation in behalf of the city library. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, I love that. Promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content programs and classes in addition to books. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, credibility, orientation, identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and build community. Today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, we see this often, even lending internet hotspots. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain relevant programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Adapting to a changing world, libraries continuously expand their resources to meet the need of their patrons. Now, therefore, I, Typhus Sorga, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of April 3rd, 2022 as National Library Week, and encourage all residents to visit the Boynton Beach City Library. Mr. Clark?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and Vice Mayor. Welcome and welcome to the city for our new Commissioners, and congratulations on the election. I'd like to invite you, any of you, to come to the library. I'd love to give you a tour and talk to you about our, our services, as well as anyone in the audience. There are brochures on the back counter with, that has a lot of our free classes, a lot of our programs. I also left you a welcome bag on your seat, so take a look at the information. And thank you very much. I also want to thank the great library staff. Today is National Library Workers' Day, and they're all wonderful staff that do a wonderful job in helping improve the lives of the citizens of Boynton Beach. So thank you.
Mr. Clark, before you go, one of the things that I remember when we were in the old location, in the, was it the old church? The temporary site?
Yes, the temporary site.
One of the things I learned about the library is that we're actually helping people graduate through school. Are we, is that a program we're still doing? And tell us about that.
Yes, it's called the Career Online High School Program. And fortunately, we got funding from the state of Florida this year, and we have a lot of, a lot of scholarships that we would love to, to award. Anyone who is nineteen and, or nineteen and over, who has not finished high school, they can contact us at cohs@boyntonlibrary.org and request to take a prerequisite course. There's two courses that you would have two weeks to finish. And then, once you finish those successfully, we invite you in for an interview and determine if you're awarded a scholarship, and you would have 18 months to complete your high school diploma. You can also transfer in credits from, from your previous high school that you went to, and it's free.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Moving on to the next and final proclamation before public audience. It is a proclamation recognizing April 22 as Water Conservation Month for the city of Boynton Beach. Cheryl McCorkle with the South Florida Water Management District will accept the proclamation. Whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the city of Boynton Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the state of Florida has designated April, typically a dry month when water demands are most acute, Florida's Water Conservation Month, to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. Now, therefore, I, Typhus Sorga, by Now therefore I type in surga by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim April 22nd as Water Conservation Month." So Cheryl here? Sherry? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public audience. Before we begin, I would like to make a few comments. Number one, I want to remind all speakers that we are limited to three minutes per person per meeting. Again, that is three minutes per person per meeting. Per the decision that we've made earlier, we will limit this public comment period to one hour. If we find that there are more people that would like to speak, we can open up public comments again towards the end of the meeting. I also want to mention for all those that are with us virtually, we want to make sure that we recognize you if you would like to speak. If you would like to speak, make sure that you leave your hand up and keep it up until we record you. But know that after the completion of all the public comments in person, we will no longer accept any more speakers online. So put your hand up, keep it up, and just make sure that it's up before the end of public comments in person. All right, so we begin at 7:05. We have one hour of public comments and three minutes per person per meeting. First speaker, please approach the podium. Hello, Ms. Gray. One second, let me begin the timer. All right, go ahead.
Awesome. Annette Gray, founder of GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute and drumroll please, Center for Workforce Development, Entrepreneurship, and STEAM.
Right.
It's official. Not only is it official, we have worked out an agreement with the developer that owns 515 Federal Highway. That will be our new home, 4,000 square feet for the next two and a half years.
Right, very good.
So, new members, welcome. I am an ag. I will call you, I will email you, I will show up. I advocate on behalf of our children and the homeless. It's what I do, it's what I'm passionate about, and I make no apologies about it. So some days you're going to like me, some days you're going to want to bury me. But it's all on behalf of a really good cause, I promise you. Just please, please, please keep in mind that there can't be too much or too many organizations helping our children. Okay, we all come at it from different perspectives. That's because intelligence does not come in one form. Our schools focus on academic intelligence. Our nonprofits, we focus on technical intelligence, emotional intelligence. So there is room for everybody. There is a village to take care of our young people. We focus at GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute on experiential learning. So when you hear me and you see me, our kids do, we do through practice. We work with the kids who don't necessarily learn from a book or sitting in the classroom. With that said, we've just been approved for a grant for $20,000 for our theatrical fusion program. This program takes kids who are challenged with mental health, drug abuse. They write and perform their own scripts around these subject matters. And they perform the scripts at other schools because our goal is to turn our young people into real-life influencers. In person, not online. Welcome, congratulations, have a great night.
Thank you. Next speaker? I'll begin the timer when you're ready.
Right now, I'll be short and sweet. Good evening, commission. Congratulations, everyone up here. It was a hard fought battle. I was out there with some of you and well-earned is what I'll say.
Could you please say your name for the record?
Sorry, my name is Gregory Hartman, 1083 Southwest 25th Place, Boynton Beach, Florida, Gulfview Harbor. Once again, congrats to all of you. Can't wait to see what the next three years holds. I'd like to express my interest in serving on the CRA's advisory board. I learned a lot in the campaign trail. I'll take some of this valuable knowledge I have to City Hall. I heard from a lot of people out there and I think this knowledge could be best served serving our city. I have a desire to serve and I think that'd be a great role for me. I'd appreciate the commission's consideration on that tonight or when the appointment may become available. And that's it for me tonight. Thanks, guys. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Shirley Casa, 650 Snug Harbor Drive. And congratulations to all in their new positions and with Commissioner Hay, I'm glad you're here too. My topic is Riverwalk. My questions, two questions if somebody can get back to me. How many units are in the 10 floors of Riverwalk? And how many parking spaces go with that building? I went to Walgreens the other day and there was no parking to even go in the store. So I waited for a spot and somebody did pull out and I did go into the store and I said, wow, how do you have any business with the parking lot so filled? There must be something that could be done. And they said, we've asked the city, but they say there's nothing can be done. That was from an employee. Possibly if there was a 30-minute parking for the businesses of Walgreens and Jo-Ann's Fabric that other people would be able to shop there, there would be a parking space for them. Right now, there's none. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And thank you for your question because that reminded me to make an announcement to my colleagues here in the dais. This is public comment. It's a time for us to hear the public. It is not a time for us to have a discussion. This is not a town hall. Having said that, you know, Ms. Casa, if you would like to leave your contact information, I believe we already have it. But for anybody, for any other speakers, if you'd like to leave your contact information, we'll make sure that staff gets back to you. All right? Thank you so much. Next speaker, your time begins now. Go ahead.
Good evening. Congratulations, Angela Cruz, Commissioner Turkin, and Mayor Penzerga. To God be the glory. I'm going to want to say, my name is Bernard Wright. I'm Bishop Bernard Wright. I'm also CEO of Bernard Wright Ministries, Real Talk Radio, Real Talk Marketing. And let me just say what I want to say about marketing. We have about $50,000 inside of this y'all put into the budget for Tori O and myself, you know, being community activists in this city. And so right now, what I would like in beginning your mayorship, that you all work a little bit more closer with Boyn Strong, Bernard Wright Ministries, and other community activists who've been putting many years into this activism and advocacy for the better and change for the better for the people of this city. So I'd like to say, oh, so I'd like to know your sentiments in respect to the termination of Mark Song, which you haven't reviewed his record. Just want to know your sentiments about that. I understand investigation and what has to go on at this point. But I think it was a slap in the face, a disservice, and a dishonor for Highway Patrol to come to that conclusion. Determination should have been more diplomatic. Let me just say this, they have passed the buck to you all. They couldn't have did a better thing because this is where it happened that you all right now have the opportunity to do the right thing, to make that determination, to terminate him and see that, you know, he get prosecuted fairly as he should. We all have that in the Constitution right, you understand? So that's what I'd like to say and congratulations to you all. God bless y'all. Y'all have a great day. And this SJ movement is still what it's about. And we're asking that you all pay attention to it and you give us a better audience than you have been getting. And let's start this thing glorious. God bless you and have a great day. I got more on my mind than this. To God be the glory.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please approach the podium. Go ahead.
Harold Lloyd, Palm Beach Leisureville. Congratulations and good luck on your service to the community. I want to thank you during this meeting. I heard that you're going to streamline permits. And in Palm Beach Leisureville, we have a recreation building that has had permit issues for over a year, which has kept this community center closed to our approximately 3,000 residents for that year. So I'm glad to see that you're working on streamlining what seems like a unbelievable process. Thank you.
Mr. Orr, just begin when you're ready and I'll begin the timer.
106 Northeast 7th Avenue, Tori Orr. Like I said, I want to congratulate the two commissioners and the new mayor on y'all's seats. And y'all here for the next three years or the four years, however it may go. I'm here, I'm here today to ask that I just hope that y'all review this officer's record, being that y'all knew. Y'all review his records and y'all come back with y'all recommendations, whatever y'all feel. You know, I hope the IA do the right next thing in Boynton Beach off Mr. Woodrow Hayes. You know, I hope the city of Boynton Beach, I hope Michael Gregory do the right thing, you know? I hope Lori do the right thing, who's already been here. And I'm here today just saying I want to congratulate y'all on y'all's seats, you know? And I hope, I hope that we get some things passed in district two. You know, some things, much needed things over there, you know, Community Review Board. You know, Woodrow you was running it one time, but then, you know, three weeks, it was over. You know, you said you wanted to run it. You came with that clearly to say you want to run the program. Then, you know, it didn't last for three weeks. So let's hope we can get it back on track again because there's some stuff, you know, some stuff that we need to know in our community. And we shouldn't have to come down here every time and know about it. We had a commissioner that we voted for in our district because you didn't get in there by yourself. And with that, man, I just hope that we just bring some justice in this city for this child losing his life the way it happened. You know, because like, we all know it could have been ended by the child that day, a tragic accident. His officer, he could have went over there, but he prayed. He decided to pray on the child that we all seen. And the Highway Patrol, they did the right thing, I guess. They can put it in y'all's hands. You know, y'all sleep together, police unions, all that.
10 more seconds.
Okay, I got 30 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the clock right. You are correct, sir. Keep going.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Orr, I want to make sure you're afforded the time that you have. If you'd like to finish your comments, you are welcome to. All right, moving on to the next speaker. Please begin when you are ready.
Hi, my name is Cindy Falca de Carrado and I want to congratulate those who came on the board. It's nice to have a new person for District 3. I hope we see some great changes in our community. It's been lacked terribly. I do know that there was a grant given for the roadway. There are so many pocket holes. There are so many devastation in our roads. It's terrible on District 3. I would also like to see our Sequest area as beautiful as District 2 and I'm so glad it's beautiful over there. But I hope that we can get the same kind of mediums and pretty things that we have in District 2 on Sequest and follow that beautiful pattern all the way. Like I said, I've seen so much garbage in our district and it's been a really sad state of affairs for District 3. I live in a historical home and it's an embarrassment sometimes to come home and people come in different venues because it's in a disarray. So I want to congratulate you, Thomas, for representing us, we the people, and for your new position as commissioner. God bless you. Thank you.
Any other speakers? For the officers standing in the back, if you would not mind if you could just make sure to, so I can keep, I can see the timer clearly. All right, begin when you are ready.
How you doing? Purnell Davis. I appreciate, nice to have you, new faces up here. But last Tuesday, we had a meeting and I was kind of disappointed that I didn't see one of these faces in the meeting. That was a time to really see how the community felt. And especially you, new commission, because y'all just got voted in. Some of those people were some of the people that voted for you. And not to be there to hear the concerns that the people...
Keep going.
So to not be there to hear the concerns that the community had was, it was a little disappointing. And also, on that exact, that day, earlier that day, we heard from FHP. We got the report and he seems as he's a good officer, but he spoke about a toxicology report for a 13-year-old, which I can understand, some 13-year-olds probably do drugs. But from what I was told, the officer didn't have to do a toxicology report. He denied. He denied it. And what I was also told in this same meeting with the chief that if you have an incident and you deny said testing, it's rooms for termination. Should I keep going? So by him denying this, and I mean, that's, that's not good. But also, in the same breath, like, we got to meet some of the people, but we didn't see Ms. Vanessa Snow. We've never seen her. She's a deputy chief, right? Well, y'all want to welcome her to the party? Because like I said, I appreciate seeing y'all up here. But every week, it's going to be a problem until we can start getting stuff together. Because it makes no sense that we seen none of y'all Tuesday. You, I can understand, you know, it's in the runoff. But Ms. Cruz, you been here. Lori, you been here. You've not been paying attention the whole time I've been talking. When I went to school, they say you listen with your eyes. You guys don't respect us at all. But that's going to change because being nice don't work. So when we start tearing shit up, start fucking stuff up, then y'all gonna care.
Sir, your comments have been noted and your time has expired. Thank you so much.
You can look up now, though.
Sir, the time has expired.
That's bullshit. Lori, the whole time I'm talking, you've been looking down at your, the whole time.
Mr. Davis?
Sign of disrespect.
Mr. Davis, you are out of order. The time has expired. We have other speakers and we have to respect their right to speak as well.
I ain't respecting that. They don't respect our rights. I sat up here for three minutes, you ain't look at me not one time.
Sir, this is your final warning. Please allow other speakers to also speak.
I'll be afraid of the cops.
All right, the next speaker, please approach the podium and begin when you are ready.
My name is Carmen Morris, 333 Northeast 12th Avenue. I'm Stella Davis, the third grandma. Now, I got a problem with, y'all ain't had no dash cam, but all of a sudden, y'all could say my grandson was going 85 miles per hour. How y'all get that when y'all ain't got no dash cam, no video, or none of that? I ain't getting none of that. I mean, Ms. Lori, there you go looking down again. I mean, come on, y'all. Give us some kind of justice about my grandson. That man pride on my grandson. My grandson was scattered that man. You understand me? When he knew that man was out and about, he would not ride his bike. And he was a careful, cautious bike rider, perfect bike rider. I don't understand how he crashed out. I don't see none of this. His body here, his bike over there, his shoe over there. His body here, his bike over there, his shoe over there, and this, that, and the. Come on, man. Y'all give me some kind of justice about my grandson. Mark Sloan home with his children and his wife, living their best life, while my grandson over there on Hoppa Luson. I ain't getting that. A 13-year-old child, not no grown man. He done killed three people, and y'all ain't seeing nothing? Y'all don't see nothing that he did wrong? I'm talking about for real. I don't know none of y'all new people, but I'm here to stand about my grandson. Y'all need to do something, man, about that man. Or some shit gonna happen that y'all ain't gonna want to happen. Call it a threat or whatever. But this ain't cool about my grandson. He was 13 years old, just turned 13, 21 days before this happened. 20-something days, I don't know how many. Yeah, 21 days. His birthday was on the 5th, and he died on the 26th. That's crazy. But Mark Sloan, y'all still got him on y'all staff praising him. I don't understand that. I ain't got no justice to that. This how I represent my grandson, this how I see my grandson. It's crazy. We need some justice, man. Mark Sloan need to be fired, prosecuted, all that. Because I'm talking about, that's just three lives this man done just do what he want to do, and y'all still upholding this shit. This shit ain't cool. It really ain't cool on everything.
Next speaker, please approach the podium. Mr. Graham, when you are ready, please begin.
Good evening. Bryce Graham, I'm the second vice president, National Action Network, Central Florida Chapter. Let me congratulate the newly appointed council members, mayor. Three months, we've been showing up here with our cries and with our demands, and now it has finally fallen within the crib. The FHP report was a disgrace. But now it is left up to Boynton Beach to do the right thing. It's left up to the chief, the city manager, and the Internal Affairs investigation to come out and fire this officer, who has caused havoc, not only to this family, but to other families in this community. And you all have allowed it to happen time and time again. And so tonight, I've come to hold the pressure just a little bit more and let you know that we are not going anywhere. And we are not going to back down until you all hold this officer accountable. Understand, we have to wait and be patient. I believe we'll do that. But I don't know how patient and how long you want us to wait in calm as we have to deal with the dissatisfaction of this city. And I want to also say that there's injustice here, because the reports are conflict. I'm reading, I'm hearing the former mayor go out saying all kind of crap. And so tonight, I've come to say that justice, as you have in this memorandum, that justice delayed, is justice denied. We want to see justice in this city, and we don't want it denied, and we don't want it delayed, and we want you all to do the right thing. Talked to a couple of people. I talked to you, mayor, newly elected mayor. I'm gonna hold you to the fire. I'm gonna hold the chief to the fire. Some people call me and say, Bryce, you shouldn't be so hard on the chief. Let him do his job. No, I'm gonna let him do his job, but I'm gonna hold him accountable until he let this officer go. Make the right decision and make the right choice, unless there will be more outrage in this community.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the next speaker, please approach the podium and begin when you are ready.
Good evening, everyone. The new commissioners, my name is Shannon Thompson. I'm obviously Stanley Dale Davis III, mother. In doing so, I just want to say congratulations, welcome you aboard. And I also just want to go ahead and say a few things, as I'm going to say every meeting in regards to my child. I just want to reiterate, according to this memorandum stated by the city manager, you did specify in here, as city manager, that you will make the final decision whether or not to uphold the police chief's recommendation. With that being said, I also want to remind you all that you had the same opportunity to uphold recommendation and to discipline the same officer with the other two fatalities that he had prior to my son, which you chose to obviously not uphold, not to hold him accountable. So I'm asking with this third death, I hope your decision is going to show and actually have some accountability to not only myself, but the other previous victims' families as well into this community. I also want to reiterate your pursuit policy. I'm not here to ask questions, I'm just here to state facts. Judging from your pursuit policy that is written here on your website, I just want to reiterate that what it specifies here, so we all come here on the same page, where there's no speculations or foreign opinions. The policy does state, the decision to initiate pursuit must be based on the pursuing officer's conclusion that the immediate danger to the officer and the public created by the pursuit is less than immediate or potential danger to the public. Should the suspect remain at large, the pursuit must be conducted in a non-reckless manner with emphasis on the safety of the public, human rights, and property of others. And then it goes to specify what the pursuit should be initiated for, only if the officer reasonably believes that the person fleeing has committed a forcible felon, which we know 13-year-old Stanley did not do of such. Your policy also begins to say how the pursuit should be terminated, and that specifies whenever the officer reasonably believes risk associated with continuation of the pursuit are greater than public safety. Mark not only pursued Stanley, but judging from the report from HFP, he chased him. The report stated that he was going 85 miles per hour, and Mark was going 80. That's a chase. He no longer pursued him. And when he was pursuing him, based on y'all's policy for termination, it should have ended. He chased my child, and we're gonna get justice.
Father Stanley III. Picking back off what mom said with the pursuit policy. Now, FSP indicated that my son was going roughly 85 miles an hour. Mark Sloan going 80 miles an hour, chasing a 13-year-old on a dirt bike at 80 miles an hour, even if he was an adult. What outcome would you be looking for on the public highway, peak of the day, chasing somebody 80 miles an hour? We spoke in the meeting this week about the videos, the random videos that's on social media, with the police chasing our kids in District 2 at high rates of speed, and there's no discipline behind their actions. But here it is, you're painting a picture of a 13-year-old as an animal, as a criminal. But here it is, this same officer that's sworn to protect is doing the complete same thing. They're worse than the people that they're pursuing. They have no regards for the community, the kids. Like I say, I sent chief a couple of videos months ago for kids through the community, 50, 60, 70 miles an hour, nothing being done about him. I'm a respectable man, and I felt in a sense the chief like disrespected me in a sense, because he gave me his word that the proper action was going to be taken. Here it is, two months later, no action. You go back to two weeks ago, it was a big ride out, people receiving tickets in the mail. So I guess individuals riding a dirt bike is more, the penalty for penalizing those individuals for riding a dirt bike on the public highway is is greater than disciplining the officer for his action. Those individuals that rode, though, riding the dirt bike, they're not sworn to serve and protect those officers, are. And here it is, it's like a wild, wild west in our community. You don't see that in no other district, but District 2. Mister, hey, that's your district, you're supposed to be the front runner in this district. Here it is, like, you know, his mom said, this is the third time. You guys seen 20 years worth of negative history in his report, and here it is, he's still here today terrorizing this community. Like, what would it take? What it's going to take for us to turn against the police, for us to understand our, for them to understand our frustration and anger? Here it is, we pleading, like we say, we showing up to the meeting, we have private meetings with chief, and nothing's being done. And here it is, we crying and crying again, three months later, nothing's being done about it. Like you say, chief said in the meeting, any shooting, any pursuit where it's crashed, anything supposed to be DNA sample, drug test, he did none of that. And if you guys are gonna say, well, yeah, it's pending investigation, the outcome of the investigation, but him refusing to take that test, that has nothing to do with the crash and the investigation. That's his own separate policy that he broke again.
Mr. Davis?
Another opportunity, I appreciate it. He get another opportunity to show the power that the union have over this community.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the next speaker, please approach the podium when you are ready, and we'll begin the timer.
Hello, I'm Portland McQuire, 506 Whispering Pines. Congratulations to the new commissioners, and thank you, Ty and Lori, everybody here for being here. I'm very sorry to speak for the family of Stanley Davis and to sort of change the subject slightly, but I wasn't intended on speaking tonight. But I also, too, have applied for the CRA. I have served as the chairman for the Arts Board since 2017 and a former candidate for District 3. It was a hard fought battle. I'd like to be considered also for the CRA. I think my history has shown that I've served the city in a volunteer position very strongly, and also without the presence of a city manager, excuse me, an arts manager for a long period of time. So once again, congratulations and thank you.
Are there any other public audience speakers in the room?
I think we may have people online.
Yes, we do. But first, I want to make sure we have completed everybody online, I'm sorry, in person, then we'll proceed online. Seeing no one else, Mr. McNolay, you will be the last speaker in person.
Is no one else? There's no one?
Please proceed when you're ready.
Ernest McNolay, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach. My home is a long block from where this incident happened with SJ. And I was working on another issue of federal highway, what goes on when it happened. So I was there, and I just want to reiterate that the Boynton Beach Police asked me to leave. They know I'm an investigative reporter. They know I'm really good at what I do. And that's why, when an officer tells you, no videos, no pictures, and leave the area, you better listen, because it's the Boynton Beach Police. Am I right, chief? Am I right, chief?
Sir, you are addressing the commission.
I can, I can...
Sir, please address your comments to us.
So what I'm gonna also say to this new mayor, you know what I noticed? Through this whole thing, you are not only insensitive, but you make a lot of false comments, and you really put people in fear, you know that? Because you're so wrapped up in yourself that you forget what happened to this child. And you disrespect everybody with your lawyer and your city manager telling people they're theatrical? Did you ever lose a child? I've lost a daughter, you know what it feels like? You don't know. What do you know? You all don't know anything, and you just try and cover up everything. How much time do I have, a minute? So here's what's going on. Look, today, there was a sheriff that was arrested for filing false police reports about child custody issues, lying on reports. A whistleblower turned them in, right? Now, you see the sheriff today, I'm trying to recall what county in Florida. He's already the sheriff on television, talking about the reports they did, there's going to be big Internal Affairs, releasing the body cams, talking about the report. You don't talk about anything. You and your law firm, forget about it. You talk about cover-up artists. That's all, that's all you've done, that law firm? Your law firm should be investigated. The city manager should be investigated, and the sitting number two district, hey, should be investigated where it happened, because you're putting us all in fear to come up here and speak. You really, and you really think that that's what you're supposed to do. And no one really cares about what you have to say about your life and your lifestyle. We're really not interested. How about doing the right thing? And you got a corrupt Internal Affairs Department, and I filed Internal Affairs complaints against your chief, your Internal Affairs Officer, and they won't even admit it.
Seeing no other in-person speakers, we're going to move on to the online speakers. Yuri, could you please begin with the first individual?
Yes, Mayor Prince, we have four hands raised at this time. We'll start with Warren Sui.
Warren, please begin when you are ready.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Warren Sui, 1525 via Alferi. I'm a resident of Boynton Beach District 1. I'd like to express my interest in participating as a member of the Boynton Beach CRA Advisory Board. I've had the opportunity to learn quite a bit about the CRA through close acquaintances and truly appreciate the mission of the CRA to redevelop and revitalize. I believe that my background as a physician and in public health and in business and development will be beneficial to the advisory board, and I certainly look forward to the opportunity to work with the commission. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker, Yuri, please unmute the next speaker.
Our next is Sheila Joe Gaines.
Sheila, begin when you are ready.
Okay, Sheila Joe Gaines, Quantum Lake 2500, I'm sorry, Quantum, well, Quantum Lake Strides 2500. First of all, congratulations, everyone, on being newly elected. However, I have a question, and it's concerning SJ. It says, "The fundamental right guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States to all who live in this nation is to the equal protection under the law." We have an internal investigations that have begun, but I think we're making a suggestion as to informing the community on what the process is, because when I read it, it states to me, and what I'm reading is, there will be an internal investigation via Internal Affairs, but we won't know what happens after that. And that's not fair. That's not fair to the community. It's not fair to his parents, his family. I think that the process is being handled how it's being handled. However, we put this emphasis on the chief when we need to put a little bit more emphasis on Internal Affairs and really understand what's happening around us, and maybe coming together to ease some of that uneasiness, right, in the community by allowing us to understand what will we get at the end of this? Because reading that one pager, for me, I understood that, okay, I'll handle it, but don't ask any more questions. And I may be wrong, however, I'm just making the suggestion to everyone that's sitting up there that looking into Internal Affairs and making sure that we understand the process. We may not be able to know 1 through 5 and what you guys ask or what questions are asked, but just giving us a little bit of ease of just understanding the process, just reading that to say, hey, listen, we'll take care of it, go ahead, it's not fair to us. It's not fair to us. And once again, I want to congratulate everyone. I know you guys are going to do the right thing and I ain't done.
Thank you for your comments. Yuri, please unmute the third speaker.
Next we have Erwin Sanes.
Erwin, please begin when you are ready.
Okay, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Erwin Sanes, 2405 Quantum Boulevard. Congrats to all the new folks who are in position. It's an opportunity for, you know, for the commission to kind of set a new tone and on how things go here. One of the first orders of business, first of all, always rest in peace of Stanley Davis III. I mean, healing his family. One of the first orders of business is obviously trying, obviously, Mark Sean and getting justice for SJ. I was able to attend the meeting last week that I guess the Boynton Beach Police Department and Internal Affairs put on. And I have to admit that it was really like, one, I did learn a lot, but it was, if I was to say that, I'd be really embarrassed by that. And the reason why is because we sat through a PowerPoint presentation of how thorough and how on point Internal Affairs is supposed to be. We learned about different softwares that they have and things like that. And but yet, everything that they said seemed to be contradicted by what's happening. One, in this investigation that just came out and actually was exposed by community who was able to speak to a video that was given around January or so, around chases that were happening in the community with different, different police officers, with folks on dirt bikes, four wheelers, whatever it may be. And when asked about that in this meeting that was happening with Internal Affairs, they really had no clue or no conversation about where they were at. And it was just very contradictory to the presentation we just had, just received a couple of minutes ago before that about how thorough they are. It just shows that Internal Affairs, I don't know, I didn't really know anything about the department. It hasn't come up in all these conversations we've had. But there seems to be something that's failing over there and something that needs to be illuminated and spoken on. And, you know, the community, like the street reformer was saying, Michelle Gaines, we need to know more about that process and how that goes. There's no, there's no faith in what they're able to do because just from what I saw and what community was able to expose, they're not really good at what they're saying that they do, which is supposed to be, I guess, managing internally what's going on inside the police department. And so there's something there needs to be seen. And last before I go, I just want to also make a comment to all those who are going for the advisory board for CRA. I just wanted to be considered for any folks from the community in District Two to please run for that. We have a lot of folks outside of community. The CRA is mainly in District Two. It affects District Two. So if we're talking about an advisory board for that, please, folks from District Two, please step up for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Sanes. Yuri, I believe that was the final speaker, is that correct?
No, we have, we had one more. Yes.
Please begin when you are ready.
Charday Hunter is self muted.
Ms. Hunter, you are self muted, please unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is Charday Hunter. I am the older sister of Shannon Thompson and I'm Esche's aunt. And I just want to say, you know, when the investigation came out and it showed that, you know, Officer Mark Sean was clocking in at 80 miles per hour and my nephew was going 85. So what that lets me know is my nephew had to go five miles per hour ahead of him just to save his own life because he was being chased. It was, it seems like he wasn't even allowed to even pull over. What type of officer would sit there and chase and pursue somebody at that, at that high rate of speed? That's not an officer. That's an animal. That is an animal. Because who would sit there when anybody with any emotional intelligence or any human decency, you know, care about other people as if they were their own family would sit there and do that to a child or to anybody? And we sitting here still referring to him as Officer Mark Sean? Get the hell out of here. He's not an officer. He's an animal. He's been proven and shown that he's have an animalistic numerous times. And you know who else is an animal? The people who are responsible for not firing him. You are also an animal and you are also responsible for Esche's death, Jaden's death and whatever, whoever else's death that that officer caused because you neglected to do your job and let that officer go. What the hell does he mean to you? So we are seeking for the attorney, for the attorney to be disbarred. That one up there, you guys attorney, and Lori, you need to resign, period. There's going to be an investigation, an eternal investigation on the city of Boynton Beach. We're going to have them reinvestigate all the people charged under Mark Sean as his record shows that he's incompetent to even conduct a police report. He's lied multiple times. So this is what's going to be happening because we're not playing here, you know? He needs to be held accountable and other people needs to be held accountable for my nephew's death and all the other people who preceded because this is not okay. This is embarrassing. I'm embarrassed to say that I'm from the city of Boynton Beach and I'm disgusted that my nephew, my nephew should be here right now. He should be here. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now closing public audience. Thank you to all the speakers. The next item on the agenda is our public hearing to address 1320 South Federal Highway. This was an item that is bringing back on to the commission for reconsideration. Mr. Cirillo, could you please take us to this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, this item is here for reconsideration after a motion that was passed at the last city commission meeting. Just to recap, this item was heard on March 1st. All the materials and backup have been provided to the city commission for this item and then two new city commissioners have had an opportunity to review those. There's no need for anything to be rehashed on the record on that. But because this is a reconsideration, what I'd like to do is go ahead and for anybody who tends to speak on this matter, I go ahead and swear them in. And so in case there's any new testimony evidence. So if you're here on this item and to speak, please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm statements or testimony? You'll speak this morning, this evening, should be the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth. And Mr. Mayor, the purpose of this again is to reconsider. There was a comment made at the last meeting on some conditions of approval. That is in the backup that you've had the ability to hear. And your decision tonight is to determine whether to confirm the decision that was made on March 1st or to do something different based on the testimony and evidence that is in the record or presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. I see that there are numerous members in the audience who wish to speak. If you would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium. And let's begin first with the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, while they're walking up, just two things, just for the record, will be added. The email sent to the city commissioners on March 30th with the backup so that you all could look at it. And then the email that was sent by the applicant's representative the night of the vote on the reconsideration is also going to be placed in the record.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Miller, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, congratulations to you all. My name is Bradley Miller with Urban Design Studio at 610 Clemata Street in West Palm Beach and here representing the applicant on this application. Rather than.
Can I just, one more thing, just, I'm sorry, I should have clarified this. You want to hear both items together? We have A and B, okay.
Actually, I don't want to hear either of them.
One, one hearing, one presentation for both items.
But here we are.
As opposed to two.
So, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. And I appreciate the introduction. I do, we do have the PowerPoint presentation, but I don't think I need to go into it unless I need to respond to some of the comments from the residents. This was an application that was originally approved in 2018. And then the site plan expired. My client purchased the property unknowingly that the site plan had expired, which means we have to come back through the process. We submitted actually the same set of drawings from 2018 to initiate that reapplication. We made some adjustments to respond to some of the updated portions of the code. And we've, we've now presented two different plans that meet the code. Just for, for the new commissioners for a site plan application, the standard for approval is to meet the code. It's not a conditional use. It's not a rezoning that has other standards to it that we have to comply with. And we've done that, done that twice. Through those applications, we had offered up some voluntary conditions of approval. And in the last hearing on March 1st, we had eight conditions of approval to go along with this modified plan that we had, that we were requested to look into. And then the, the approval that came out in, I think I have the date, around March 1st, the conditions that were drafted up subsequently to that by the staff as it was approved was presented in a way that the hours of operation for the retail use was unrestricted to the days of the week. It was restricted, something I agreed to at that hearing at the request of Mayor Grant, was that the retail businesses in that business close at nine o'clock. The days of the week was never discussed, never offered. I've gone back and I've watched every one of the public hearings on, on, on video. I know your staff has done the same and we're, we're both concurring that there was no restriction to the days of the week for the retail use. At the March 15th commission meeting, Dr. Snyder, who's here this evening, I'm sure will speak, asked that we take a look at that. The way the condition was read didn't specify whether it was going to be open or not. From, from a planner's perspective and an interpretation of the code, if it's not specified, then the code prevails. The code doesn't have any restriction on those retail days. So that's why it was written the way it was and, and city staff, if I'm stating that incorrectly, please, please correct me. So it's, we can't restrict the days of the week with the retail. We don't know who that user is. Retail users survive off of seven days a week in most situations. So I'm here on behalf of my client to, to say, we just want to have this approved. We had a great conversation with your staff this afternoon to submit permits. We're thinking if it can't be done this week, probably next week. So we're ready to roll. I remember Mayor Penserga many times in discussions with you, you brought up the point of why do we have so many parcels along federal highway that are undeveloped? Here's an opportunity to get one out of the ground. It's a great use, you know, on a parcel that's been vacant since 2005. So I would like to reserve some time to respond to any of the comments, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. And yes, I have no problem with you addressing the comments at the end.
Good evening. Welcome to the new commissioners and the mayor. You're doing a great job here tonight and I wish you well in your endeavors. I have a little handout coming around that. I'll be speaking from. And when we were here on March 1st, as Mr. Miller said, towards the end of the discussion, the Mayor Grant tried to help the residents of the area by bringing up some concerns about the other uses, not just the office uses, to get some specificity about hours. And we were grateful for that. And I wasn't allowed to speak, but I was trying to say, what about Sunday? Because I know some of you heard this already, please excuse me for repeating. On February 10th, we had a meeting with Snug Harbor and residents from our street on Riviera Drive. Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie Snyder, Riviera Drive. Sorry about that. And I hope this is the last time I'm here talking about it. I thought last time was. At the meeting on February 10th, it was agreed that the uses at that time were office uses only and the building would be closed on Sunday. And we were very excited about that. And there were eight conditions. That's page one of your handout. If you look at number two where it was closed on Sunday. And then currently, based on the meeting on March 1st, it's worded on page two on number 28 where there's hours Monday to Saturday for the office uses eight to seven and the commercial uses eight to nine. And I tried to ask what about Sunday because a lot of people felt strongly that the building should be closed on Sunday to be consistent with what occurs at Colonial Center and the other two office buildings just north of there. I understand what Mr. Miller has said. And at the time though, I felt I had to represent the people that I've been working with and I'm concerned about it too. So I tried to ask the question informally around March 1st, March 4th, March 3rd, to see if anything could be clarified about Sunday because it sort of happened quickly at the end of the discussion with Mayor Grant and Mr. Miller. And really, they couldn't change anything. So I was told that I needed, I said, is there any other way to get it clarified? And so I thought that if it got brought up for reconsideration, I was told there were two options. One seemed less formal than this. And if I had known y'all were going to have to do a mailing and all that stuff, I probably wouldn't have pursued this in this regard. But since it did go through and I needed to be here because this is important, we would love for the building to be closed on Sunday, but I understand what Mr. Miller's saying. There's other people that still would like it closed on Sunday. But if there's retail in there, we don't know what's going to be in there. But I just have to say, I've learned a lot about the people in the neighborhood through this process. And if it's disruptive or noisy or not neighborly, that calls will be made to the police and that's not a threat or anything. But we just want it to be congruent with the neighborhood. And Colonial Center is closed on Saturday and Sunday. But I've been told that that won't be the case for this. So I don't know what else could be done at this point, but I think some of the other residents have something to say. I think some of us feel like it was agreed in February, that should be upheld, but the use has changed and we understand that. So that's why it came up and people still feel strongly about it. So that's all I have at this time.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, council members and new members and friends. Congratulations, but I think more in order, good luck. I know it's not easy. Now, I'm from Brooklyn. I'm not going to be as polite as Carrie was. But I was at the meeting with Mr. Miller where he said there'd be no Sunday hours. And they questioned him about that. And he said, well, we agree, no Sunday hours. Now he comes up with, well, we changed some of the designs and we're going to add parking and we're going to do retail. But we never changed our mind. There was this people in Snug Harbor and Carrie and everyone else that agreed there'd be no Sunday hours. And the reason we were happy with that is because we knew it would limit who would go in there. Now, where that agreement got changed with Mr. Miller, I don't know. As far as I knew, when you voted last time to have the hours changed and retail downstairs so we could fit the parking. so we could fit the parking people in, we still didn't agree on having Sunday hours. And that's where I'm upset, because it seems to me he's trying to sneak this in, saying because we changed the parking rules, that we should change other things. No, we should not. We should not be adding Sunday. If they have a problem renting, then maybe they ought to go to, back to renting to professional on the first floor, because it could be done that way. I agree, we agreed with everything else. We agreed, you know, we were fighting over the parking for a long time. We came a long way in agreeing to all these items. And now here we are again with Mr. Miller trying to sneak something else in on us. So I appreciate your thoughts on that, because we did vote for you. We're proud that you're in here, but consider us as the neighbors that have to put up with this. Okay? Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Linda Morton. I live on 641 Riviera Drive in Boynton. I've been a resident there for 24 years. I also represent the Colonial Center Association, Condominium Association. I'm president of that. I've been an owner in that place also for 24 years. And as everyone says, congratulations to everybody. We're really happy with our new commissioners. Just reiterating what Kerry said and what the gentleman from Snug Harbor said, you know, we had this agreement, we've given up, we bowed on the original extension of the height, which really started this whole process. If the height restriction had not been allowed, as the planning and zoning had voted against it, we would not have all these problems. The planning and zoning had suggested to the prior city commission that the height extension should not be allowed. Therefore, this property would not, this building would not be built and the building would be built as it fit on the property, which is what we have said all along. The building should have fit on the property, including the parking. The parking is going to create problems for all of the residents, it's going to create problems for Colonial Center. In addition to that, one of the consensus, again, things changed. Our Colonial Center sign is no longer going to be visible once this building is up. We spent $15,000 for that sign about 15 years ago. Originally, they said, oh yes, no problem, we'll move the sign. Secondly, they came back, oh, we'll give you $2,500. Well, that wouldn't even cover digging the sign up. Okay, now we'll give you 5,000. Again, it will not cover the cost of a new sign for us. So this is a case of several instances where promises were made to us by the developer and by Mr. Miller, and then things changed. And now we have this issue back to the fact that we have parking on our street, we have traffic on our street, and the biggest issue for us now is now we have Sunday activity, which we don't want. And one other thing I wanted to mention is, when they're allowing this retail, again, back to the point, One Boynton, 500 Ocean, has lots of open retail space that has never been used, as has Caia Costa. We don't need more retail in downtown Boynton. And I wish that the commissioners would consider what was promised to us and now has been taken away. Thank you.
Shirley Casa, 650 Snug Harbor Drive. I understand the retail space has already been assigned or leased to somebody. If we knew who our neighbor is going to be, we may be able to settle this more easily. Possibly Mr. Miller could tell us who's renting the retail space.
Next speaker. And are there any other speakers after this individual afterwards?
How are you? I'm Tom Ward, 650 Riviera Drive. Again, congratulations and probably better said, good luck. I want to congratulate Mr. Miller for his abilities to navigate around a lot of things that we homeowners probably don't have the ability to. He's very skilled at what he's doing and it's pretty much a bait and switch. We've acquiesced to a lot of things that we were concerned about, the parking, the height, a very nice, quiet neighborhood. Analogies were brought forward about West Palm Beach and parking in West Palm Beach, but we're not in West Palm Beach. So I would just ask you to put this thing into what the request is of the citizens and on Sunday, limited. It's a professional building. There's a dentist that's going to own it. He's going to have to do a lot of teeth to pay for it. And I'm sure there's a lot of nice professional people that would like to take up that space. But I can see what our friend, the investigative reporter said, we were going to get rolled over. And I think we pretty much got rolled over. Thank you.
Right? Do you swear up for statements or testimony you give this evening? Should we just shoot the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Ernest McGully.
Thank you.
Ernest McGully, Northeast, you going to start the timer? No?
Not necessary. Please proceed.
Ernest McGully, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach. I live in a neighborhood that's kind of similar to the one you're talking about. And I just, I can't imagine what it will be like to have something like that put in the front of a family, established, beautiful, loving community like that, that doesn't need this. If you go there, I've spent hundreds of hours there. I cannot believe the skill of this Mr. Miller. I mean, this guy could sell snowballs to, you know, it's amazing. And you know, the gentleman who just spoke is 1,000% correct. We were there at a meeting, he says, okay, we're not going up four floors. Okay, we're going to try and make it smaller. Okay, no Sundays. Okay, no parking on the, and then he comes back, this guy is like, wow, look how good he is. He gets everything approved again. Now, here's what concerns me. Not only do I look, when I try and investigate stuff like this, I look at the total picture. Now, when you feed in political, who this doctor supports politically, who he gives money to, whose political signs were all over his property, you know, you know what's going on in Boynton Beach with developers, with these boards and with these commissioners for this, excuse me, for districts? It's unheard of. You can't separate politics with what you're all doing. And everybody says the same thing. How we, the taxpayers, you, the commissioners, we're the taxpayers and you seem to be working with the lawyers, the developers, and the political commissioners who want to get elected? Really? If you think about the mayor who got elected, he had his political signs on more development places than anybody I've ever seen. And the same with District 1. I mean, come on, everywhere, where you look where the people died, that's where your signs were. And then when you see how you don't inspect that building and two people died, you look on the news, what they said, oh, well, you know, we're not going to give the guy a drug test or an alcohol test. And you ever go around that development? I know, you don't like hearing it, right, Mr. P? You don't like hearing it. But look what I did before those people died. I was going around there and saying, what's wrong with this, with these cranes? And the way they're doing this and no inspector and the work environment? And then all the whiskey bottles, beer bottles all over and the guys come out for lunch, ah, ah, throw it on the ground?
Sir, one moment. I respect your right to free speech. However, your comments have to be germane to 1320 South Federal. All right?
It is germane. I'm talking the same.
Please bring it back to the item at hand.
I'm talking the same area. I'm talking a pattern that you do. You work with architects and whoever, like this guy Miller is, and the people in town. It's amazing. You're at the meetings, you listen, you say, oh, I care, the woman who came in with her baby. You're like, oh, and then you vote. And you always vote against the residents. Always. Always for the developers. Always for the millionaire doctors. Always for, you know, and you say, well, it doesn't matter. Well, you know what? That's why some of you got elected with all that money. Look, everywhere you look where a development that was questionable got approved, one of you had your political sign there. Like that rotten chicken place you approved had your stuff all over it. What do you think? We're stupid? You think we're stupid, right?
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other speakers on the podium, Mr. Miller, you did request to respond to the comments. Please approach the podium.
Mr. Mayor, we should just make sure no one raised their hand online.
Oh, I'm sorry. There may be virtual speakers. Yuri, is there anyone online?
Yes, we have one hand raised. That is David Katz.
Please begin.
David Katz is self muted.
Mr. Katz, you are self muted. Please unmute yourself and begin once you are able. Going once, going twice.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Mr. Katz, please begin.
Well, I didn't want to speak on this topic at all. I wanted to speak during public audience for some reason. My hand was cut off, so there's nothing more I can say. So I appreciate you finally getting back to me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Miller, I believe you're up.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. In case you guys have any questions, the staff is available to answer any questions you have on the application.
Thank you. We'll let him respond and the members of the commission can answer questions.
Couple of responses again, Bradley Miller for the applicant. As far as a tenant goes in the retail, I have no idea. So if there's rumor out there, it's stayed away from me. So I have no idea who that would be. There's the perception here of, I'm a lot smarter than I think I really am. What I did is I followed the process of a site plan application and we initially submitted a development project that was all office space, medical and professional office space. At that first hearing, there was a lot of outcry from the residents about the parking. And at that meeting, I was asked to go back and look at the plan and see what we could do with the parking. And working with your staff, it was the, in order to reduce the number of parking spaces that were out on the street, there was a different parking rate that applied when the uses are mixed of office and retail. So it's one of those, so we went that route to reduce the number of spaces on the street. With that, we've got a different use. There was no bait and switch. It was, as one lady mentioned, that things changed. And it did change. It went from office space, from professional and medical office space, to have office space and retail space. Retail space is a different situation, different type of use, different type of tenants, and it needs Sunday hours. There's been reference to Colonial Center is closed on Sundays. It's an office complex. There's no retail in there. So there's the point. There was also the comment about the height exception. And if the height exception went away, then the whole project would have gone away. Actually, that's not true either. If the height exception went away, it would be a boring, bland, square, rectangular building. So that was, that was why it was approved by the prior commission. That's why we wanted approved here again tonight without the restriction of closed retail on Sunday, which I think was the reason for the reconsideration. Thank you.
Sir, the time for speakers from the audience has now completed. Now is a time for staff to provide any input. Is there any new information that we should be aware of at this time, sir? Okay. Any other input from staff? All right. At this time, I'd like to hear from our colleagues in the dais who would like to begin. Vice Mayor, hey, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. I think it needs to be brought out from the very beginning that the applicant, along with Bradley Miller, has met our code from the very start. But because of their willingness to try and satisfy the residents in that area, we spent, we spent a lot of times, a lot of time dealing with the height exception, the parking, the building, the retail, the professional space, and on and on. And there were changes made to both sides to try to make this project a win-win for everybody. At the last meeting, we even sent them back again to try to make this work and come out as a win-win. Where I am right now is we need to move forward. I feel that the applicant, along with the planner, has gone overboard to try to satisfy the parties involved. Some were satisfied, some people are happy, some people are not happy. But I think with this one item is not enough to hold up a great project for this city and that piece of property that's been vacant for quite some time. So Mayor and to my constituents, I'm at the point that we need to move on and I will be voting in favor of this project.
Vice Mayor, would you like to put forth a motion? The motion that I would request then, and then if there's further comments, we'll have that after, if there's a second, the motion would be to, excuse me, one second, to confirm the previous decision on March 1st. Let's see where this motion goes. May I have that motion to confirm the March 1st decision?
So move that we move ahead to what was decided on March 1st.
All right. Is there a second? Going once, going twice. Hearing no second, the motion will not be considered for a lack of second.
Okay, so does the commission want to take any action? It is an application for site plan and height exceptions. So is there something different that the commission wants to do on this application? Because as it stands now, it does not have any approvals to proceed.
I would like, if you can explain to the public, our jurisdiction as a voting body, as a commission, on what kind of criteria we can review in order to get approval for a project, so that the public can understand that and understand to what point we have the authority to do so.
So when an application comes through for this type of project, the job of the city is to review it and the staff reviews it initially to determine whether it complies with the city's code of ordinances. The purpose of, and they go through an analysis and they provide you an analysis, and that analysis was in the backup. It goes through a planning and zoning board review as well, and it comes to you all for a decision. When you act as a quasi judicial matter, it's called quasi judicial because you're making determinations based on facts that are presented to you, but you're not judges. So you're sitting like, and that's why they call it quasi judicial, you're judging what's brought before you. If the evidence shows that the applicant has met the criteria in the code, you are basically, those are the determinations you've made. And if you make those determinations, they've met the code, then you approve the project. If there's anything that you find based on the evidence that is presented to you where something is lacking in the code, there might be contested evidence between staff and the applicant. That happens a lot and they want this board to, or this commission to resolve that, then you would not pass it. But if it meets the criteria of the code, then it's like a math equation. If you meet, if you find A and you add it to B, then it must equal C. And so in this particular case and the presentations that were given to you, the decision on March 1st was that it did meet code and that it should move forward with an approval. The issue of the hours is not something that's in our code. Okay? So that is not something that would be used in your criteria evaluation under a site plan analysis. It is something that develops- It is something developers agreed to certain conditions to work with neighborhoods or work with the commission on things. But in order to require something, it has to be in the code.
And as I understand, we've gone through all this twice.
We went through that. This was this is the second night that the commission. I don't know if they had meetings before March 1st, but March 1st is when the commission had the hearings on these three on these applications and and did approve them. And those are the conditions that were.
Can we explain to the public what could happen legally if we do not accept this as it is at this time?
Well, I don't want to give people legal advice, but let's just say that if somebody's unhappy with the decision of the city commission, they can file a challenge to circuit court, and the city will have to defend that decision. What the judge is going to look at is whether there was evidence in the record to support a decision by this commission. So if the commission, if the effect of the commission's decision is to approve the project and someone challenges that approval, then a judge and will have to look at what's in the record and see whether what you decided was based on the competent substantial evidence in the record. Okay, if you and if, say, you deny the application, the are the judge is going to look to see whether there was any evidence to show that any of the criteria in the code was not satisfied.
Okay, so just to reiterate, if we do not accept this, there will be a possibility of the city being sued. And under that rationale, it's also possible that it could cost our taxpayers money.
Yes.
Thank you for explaining that.
If.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Hey.
If I if I may just add what you're saying is right. I've been on this road several times over the year that I've been here. Legally, we could be held responsible and some monies be paid, and they could still build the project. So here again, if you look at what's been decided over time, they have allowed or restrict or reduced or try to work with us and our staff to make this project a win-win. I go back to that. And they could come back and say, you know what, all those things that that I agreed to do, I'm not going to do anymore. I'm gonna pull them off the table, and we would still be held. Okay, they could still go ahead and and legally hold us responsible, and they still build the project. We're at a point now with both sides, in my opinion, to move forward with this after much discussion with the the owner, the planner, our staff, with the residents. Everybody has had their say, and at some point, and I think that point is now, that we really need to move forward. Because this is this one item, you we you're not always going to get everything that you want. Okay, and so, please, sir. And so it is in my opinion that we're at that point where we can move forward with this project. So I still stand by my my position on this.
Wait, are there any other questions or comments by members of the commission? I want to make sure that all members have a fair chance. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Turk, and he has not yet spoken.
Thank you. So can we can we get back to the rumor of what the retail space is? Mr. Miller, you said you don't know with your client. Can we? Can we ask your client? Is that are we in are we in realm to do that?
It's you. You can. You can ask a question, but if it's not relevant to the criteria in the city's code, then it wouldn't be whether the answers, say, you know, a Starbucks or if it's a laser tag, then you wouldn't be relevant as long as it's allowed in the zoning district, and they meet the criteria for that use, and that's really the criteria you would use.
Because I can definitely emphasize with these residents. I mean, I've spoken at these prior meetings. You know, I'd like I'd like to see what what this retail space is going to be used for.
And and if I knew Commissioner. To that. It's one one thing that I I've learned about reconsideration in my 35 years of doing this. I think it's happened twice, this being the second time. And I believe there's two times that you can ask for reconsideration. One is, as Dr. Snyder did at the next commission meeting, or the other, and Mr. Attorney, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the other is to do it right here and here and now. I think he provided a lot of information as to the standards for approvals and the requirements for the approvals. I'd like you to possibly reconsider the the approval as it was originally presented by the vice mayor.
And back to the the sign for the Colonial Center. What is there? Has there been any advance on how that compensation is going to look like?
That that amount was offered by my client to to them. It's something that it was voluntary. We.
Outside of Riviera Drive, correct?
That's correct.
There that was not a concession?
There's there's three parking spaces remain on the south side. That was it went from six to three with the change of the uses. On the south side of Riviera Drive, there were six. Now there's three.
Okay.
There's a total of.
We initially asked for a motion which did not receive a second. However, after hearing all the comments thereafter, it appears to me the direction has changed. But before we move any further, let me just make my comment from based of based on what I just heard here in these past few minutes. We have an applicant that has met code. And from what I hear, the legal requirement, okay, the legal requirement is to meet code. And they went a step further. Here's there was some miscommunication, and that became apparent. If we were to reject the applicant despite the fact that they have met code, I see two scenarios, both of which could easily happen. Number one, all those voluntary concessions that they've already made, it may not come back. I don't want to lose all the hard work that's already been put in based on one item. Right? So a lot of good work has happened, a lot of concessions has been made, but I don't want to lose all of that over one thing. Number two, based on what I've heard from legal and the other commissioners, I also don't want to put the city in a position to be sued, and there is legal precedent for that. Having said that, let us get some clarity and finality to this issue so we can move forward. It's available online. James Gammick. Would the swearing in begin now, or would we do that at another time? There's no swearing in?
And for Vice Mayor, you're already you've already been sworn in as a commissioner.
All right, sounds good.
Mayor Crystal Gibson, City Clerk, just for clarification.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. I apologize about that. Let's go back. And please do the roll call. From what I recall, it is a three to one vote, but let's begin the roll call.
Right, okay. Mayor Pincirga.
Yeah. So we have already completed five A, which is your appointment. Now we're on five F. And I have the list here for all of the appointments. Where is it? One second. Appointments and applicants. Here we go. For the Art Advisory Board, the first nomination will come from myself. I would like to nominate Clovis Moody for a regular position for a period of two years on the Art Advisory Board. May I have a second?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Clovis Moody. The next category is Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. There are no applicants for that. The next category is Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. The first nomination will come from myself for a regular position for a period of two years. I nominate Sharon Resiewick. She is a current board member seeking a reappointment for second term. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of appointing Sharon, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose? The motion passes three to one. Congratulations. Education and Youth Advisory Board. I'm sorry, one second. There is another appointment to the CRA Advisory Board that is being made by Commissioner Cruz, Vice Mayor Cruz, for a regular board seat for a period of two years.
I'd like to nominate Warren Sui for a two-year appointment for the Advisory Board for the CRA.
Okay, we have a nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Education and Youth Advisory Board. The there are no applicants for the Education and Youth Advisory Board. Moving on to Historic Resources Preservation Board. The first nomination will come from Vice Mayor Cruz. The first nomination will come from Vice Mayor Cruz for a regular board seat for a period of two years. This is the Historic Resources Preservation Board, and there's only one applicant.
I'll go ahead and nominate Ben Lowe.
Second. All those in favor of appointing Ben Lowe say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no? Sure, sounds good. Thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to the Library Board, the first appointment is to be made by Vice Mayor Cruz, regular board seat, two years, followed by Commissioner Hay. Vice Mayor Cruz, please begin.
You want me to begin?
Vice Mayor Cruz, she's the first to make an appointment.
I'd like to nominate Thomas Devlin.
Second, all those in favor of appointing Thomas Devlin to the Library Board say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose? Motion passes unanimously. The next appointment to the Library Board is by Commissioner Hay.
I wish to table that one.
All right, is there a second to table?
Second.
Second, all right, we're going to table this item. Moving on to the next category, Planning and Development Board, the first nomination is to be made by Commissioner Hay.
I'd like to nominate Tim Litch.
All right, I will second that. All those in favor of Tim Litch say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose?
Nay.
The motion passes three to one. The next appointment is by Commissioner Turkin. Would you like to make a nomination?
Sure.
And which board is that, Mayor?
This is the Planning and Development Board.
I'd like to nominate Courtland McQuire.
All right, we have a nomination for Courtland McQuire. I can second that. And now, just to be clear, Courtland did not apply.
I believe he did contact the City Clerk, if I'm not mistaken.
Can we verify that?
I know, I know he wanted the CRA Advisory.
Yes, so this is the appointment for the Planning and Development Board. Did he also submit an application for Planning and Development?
I did not have an application for Planning and Development Board.
Okay.
Can we table that?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. All right. Now, the next appointment for the Planning and Development Board happens to be for the District Four Commissioner, which is vacant. Legal, could you weigh in? Would this mean that I would be the next individual to make that appointment?
I'm sorry, you asking to skip the vacant and go to yours now?
No, my question is, is that what we would do?
Yes.
Very rare that this occurs. All right, so I will make the appointment of Tom Romichio. He is a current board member seeking a reappointment for a second term for the Planning and Development Board. Is there a second?
Wait a minute. Are you making the nomination for the vacant position?
Yes, that was my question to Legal.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I was looking at the order and you were next in the queue, and I said, I was thinking you would. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the custom, but I, since it's vacant, I would, I would assume maybe you would wait to the point, the person would come in and point, make them make that appointment for C four. I misunderstood. I thought since you were next in line, you were ready to go for the alternate.
No worries. Thank you so much for that clarification. We're going to move on to Recreation and Park Board. There are no applicants for that. The Senior Advisory Board has two applicants, Thomas Devlin and Judith Lyman. The first nomination can be made by Commissioner Turkin.
I'd like to nominate Thomas Devlin.
I proudly second that.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of appointing Thomas Devlin to the Senior Advisory Board say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose?
Nay.
The motion passes three to one with Vice Mayor Cruz dissenting. The next appointment is vacant, and so we will proceed, and I believe that is the end of the item. I have received a message. The online system needs to be rebooted, so I'd like to request a five-minute recess. Yes, Commissioner Hay?
Because the, the second one to nominate is, is the vacant, which we don't have, would it not be proper for the mayor, since he has a nomination for a regular, to go ahead and appoint?
That was precisely my question before to Legal.
Yeah, I thought, again, you would skip that and go on to the next one. You're here to make your appointment as mayor. When you were, before it was an alternate, and I apologize if I misunderstood again, but I was thinking that you would, if you were, since the order of the, of these boards, there's no reason why, and I don't think you couldn't proceed with your appointments. You just hold the District Four appointments until you have a commissioner for District Four, but there's no reason why you couldn't continue along that line if that's what you would like to do.
If you.
Okay, well, hearing that, then I will make my appointment. I appoint Judith Lyman to the Senior Advisory Board. All right, all those in favor of appointing Judith Lyman to the Senior Advisory Board say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose, the ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Yeah.
Pensurga, this is Crystal Gibson, City Clerk. Now, with that clarification, to, to circle back to the Planning and Development Board, you can skip the vacant one to make your alternate appointment. Just want to make sure you know that both Jay Sobel, yes, Jay Sobel is an alternate member currently. So if you're going to reappoint him for an alternate member appointment, reappointment, that would be in order.
He is currently an alternate, you said?
Correct.
All right, well, in that case, I will nominate gladly Jay Sobel to the Planning and Development Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of appointing Jay Sobel say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose?
Nay.
All right, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. Are there any items that we need to recircle back to? Was that it?
Yes, Mayor, there is one. To go back to the District Four vacancy announcement, I am going to place that announcement on our website and in the newspaper. I wanted to see if it is okay with the commission to add a line in that advertisement to say that the documents that are required to be considered for appointment can be submitted to the City Clerk via email at cityclerk@bbfl.us.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, thank you. I have been informed by staff that the system needs to reboot, and there's a request to take a five-minute recess. I may have a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
Us for five minutes.
Second, all those in favor to recess for five minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. See you in five minutes.
The reboot.
And is the system fully back online? Can, can somebody confirm?
Yes, Mayor.
We are fantastic. We will resume this meeting. All members of the commission have now returned. The next item on the agenda is administrative under letter H. Staff is requesting the City Commission schedule and attend a strategic planning workshop on Saturday, May seventh, 2022, at the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. The workshop will be held from nine AM to two PM and will include a discussion on conducting public meetings, governance, team building, and strategic planning for 2223. Is there anything else that the staff would like to add on this topic? Mr. Scott, I see you're approaching the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners David Scott, Director of Economic Development and Strategy for the City of Boynton Beach, Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Pensurga. You absolutely have covered it. We were excited to present to the commission the strategic planning done to date, provide an update on the current state of several of our projects as we begin our strategic planning for next year, for 2023. After that workshop, we would then begin our strategic planning process for a five-year strategic plan, which then will be posted next year. So we're excited about that. We're going to talk about team building and governance within the commission as well. So we will have consultants available to us to help facilitate that. It will be held at the Intercoastal with your permission, and we are excited and looking forward to that conversation.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the commission? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on. Thank you so much, Mr. Scott. I look forward to the event. Now we're moving on to Consent Agenda. Are there any items that the members of the commission would like to pull under Consent Agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
Crystal Gibson. Just wanted to check, did we go to item five G?
We had that tabled.
We're tabling it into the next meeting. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't have yet the fifth member of the commission, so I said we should table that item.
Thank you.
Again, are there any items you'd like to pull for Consent Agenda? It's all right, what's going on?
I did want to make a comment regarding five G, if possible, even though we're not hearing it today. Made some notes. What I wanted to say is, I'd like to learn more about the ARPA funds and other eligible uses for that money. Instead of moving forward with what's already been presented and accepting staff ranking of those applications to the notice of funding opportunities to use for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, I would like to request a staff report on what other ways we could use those funds and present that at a future City Commission meeting.
Vice Mayor Cruz, that is an excellent idea. I was just speaking to staff earlier about this topic. It's good for all of us to be brought up to speed on the ARPA funds and its eligible uses and all of that, so we can add that under Future Agenda Items. All right, we'll plan for a workshop on that, and and David, did you want to say anything?
Yes, sir. Mayor, thank you. Commissioner, thank you. We are, we will certainly look forward to that, so we'll put that on the Future Agenda and be prepared to walk through a workshop with you.
All right, any other comments before we move forward? Okay, again, are there any items that you would like to pull from Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose? The motion passes unanimously, and the Consent Agenda is approved. We're moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Are there any items that you would like to pull under Consent Bids and Purchases Over $100? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those who oppose? The motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over $100,000 are approved. That brings us to City Manager Report, which are none, unfinished business, none, and now we are under new business. Commissioner Turkin, earlier you had requested to add a consideration for a PBSO merger. At this time, if there's any other questions or comments by members of the commission, I would like to request for a motion to direct staff to request for a merger with PBSO. May I have that motion?
Motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second on this question? We have a motion from Commissioner Turkin. We have a second from Vice Mayor Cruz. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those who oppose say no?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion passes three to one with Vice Commissioner Hay dissenting. City Manager, I see your hand is up. Did you have a question?
I need a little bit of clarification. So when we say to direct staff for a merger, do you have any interest in staff pulling together the financial impact of this potential merger on the city organization? And or what the costs will be with the Sheriff's Office versus what financial impact it will be having on this organization citywide, because the department kind of touches just about every other department in the city? Do you want us to do any of that work? We've got pension issues, we've got asset issues, personnel. Do you, what, what would you like us to do to get you some background?
Just to clarify, my understanding is that this is a direction to request for a proposal for a potential PBSO merger. What that means is to direct staff to reach out to PBSO, work with them, to come up with those analyses.
Okay, so we'll do an analysis for the internal for our city, but we will reach out to them to provide a a price per se, like we've done in the past, to provide services in the city. And then you want all of that information, right?
Yes, and Commissioner Turkin, you were the one who brought this item up, so feel free to chime in. I want to make sure I understood your intentions correctly.
So I, I believe we'll, I believe staffs will reach out to PBSO and pursue an RFP.
Well, it won't be an RFP. It will be a direct, like, basically a direct request for a proposal for services, because they're the only
Isn't.
They're, they're the only provider, so we don't need to do a request for proposals, which seeks multiple proposals.
Understood.
Basically a sole source in that sense. So we will get a price from them to
And a presentation? Okay. Okay.
Not having a license, a rent. Up to that amount on a penalty that was happening since two thousand six, which I, I had no idea that this was happening. So it accrued, all of a sudden, it built up to six hundred thousand dollars. I first found out about this, I, I absolutely did not ignore this, uh, necessity that we needed to have the license. I just didn't know. So we went to sell the, the, the unit, and the lawyer said, is a lien from the city? I said, okay, what is it? They said, uh, you know, you have to have a license, a renters license. I said, okay. I mean, we're, don't forget, we're selling it for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, less than a hundred, in that area, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the unit. They said the lien is six hundred fifty thousand dollars. I said, that has to be a joke. It, I mean, how does it come to six hundred fifty thousand? They said, it accrued every day. I said, it accrued every day, a hundred dollars, we should have known that this is happening. If we would have known at all, we were never properly notified about this. So all of a sudden, so I actually, when, when we first had the hearing with the, I think it's the magistrate, when we had the hearing with the magistrate. So the staff said, don't worry, this happens typically. It's usually they'll charge you administration fee, it'll be a few hundred dollars, and that's, that's what it'll be. I don't know, I wasn't there. My friend was there, who's local, and, uh, and they went away with six, six thousand dollars, sixty-five hundred dollars. That's a lot of money for a unit that, where we're, we're totally losing on it regardless. It was, it was not anything. It's just money after bad money. So that's my, my point is, we had no idea that this was happening. And, um, and, and if we would have, we would have totally taken care of it. I, I think that we weren't properly noted, notified about it. In fact, what's interesting, if I could add, we were finding ourselves over here today because we weren't properly notified. We wanted to appeal it and go to the magistrate again. But we got notified about it after the time expired when we're allowed to appeal it. That's when we got the mail, and we had it on the mail. So this, this recurred itself that we weren't able to appeal it before we knew that we're allowed to appeal it, if that makes sense.
Since November two thousand and nine, you saying that you didn't know all of this time that, you know, ignorance is no excuse in either of the law. I see you making a ton of money off of this project. And you're telling me now that this one percent is going to make or break you?
First of all, we're, we're not making a ton of money off this project. We're losing money off this project. Clearly, we're losing money off this project. And I'm not, let me, let me be clear with you. I am not a, uh, investor, a, a builder, anything like that. This was my friend locally who said this will be a good idea. There's an apartment that was in two thousand six, two thousand eight, everything tanked. We were going to walk away from it. And, um, so we held on, and there was a veteran who was renting it until he passed away in the unit. About two thousand eighteen, he passed away. We, it wasn't rented since then, so it's sitting empty, paid all the taxes, paid all, everything. So it's, it, my, my point is, it's very unusual, sixty-five hundred dollars for such a, such an item. It, it, we, as, you know, in fact, in, in, in light of the fact that we had no idea about this. I mean, I first found out about it from the lawyer saying there was a lien and, and how much it is. So, so that's why I'm requesting.
I have a question for staff. Were these individuals properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
What were the means of notification? How often? Tell me about that.
Super pursuant, uh, to, to state statute and, and the city code, the, uh, staff is required, um, for these to, uh, do certified mail to the, uh, address provided on the, on the county tax collector's website, and that process was followed. They, they were, uh, each time they were, they were mailed certified mail to the address on the tax collector's office, they were returned, uh, unclaimed. Um, meaning that nobody went to go pick up their certified mail, uh, from, from, uh, from the post office. And in addition to that, um, staff is required to, um, uh, post the property, uh, and fill an affidavit out that they've posted the property. Um, in addition to the certified mail. Uh, so those affidavits were, were also done. So the, the property was posted, so if there was a, a, a renter at the property, they would have, uh, they would have seen the, the notice posted on, on the front door.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the Commission?
So, did you sell this property?
We did, just recently.
On February twenty-second, about, about that time?
Yeah.
Okay. And can I ask what the purchase price was?
Purchase price?
Correct.
Was about a hundred fifty-three.
Okay. What did you pay for it?
But that, that's what we paid for it. I mean, what did we sell it for?
Correct.
A hundred sixty.
The purchase from the buyer.
Hundred sixty.
A hundred sixty.
Sixty, and we bought it for a hundred fifty-three. But all the costs and, and years and years of, okay, years of not having anybody in there, we lost a lot of money. I mean.
And so it was rented from oh-nine to two thousand eighteen, you said?
Oh-six to two thousand eighteen to this veteran. Yeah, and he passed away in the unit.
Okay.
Twenty eighteen.
And what was the monthly rent?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred?
Yeah.
From two thousand six to?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Mayor, um, I, I don't think we, this gentleman identified himself or his relationship to the property. So can we have him do that for the record?
Yes, sir. Please, uh, mention your name and your connection to the property.
My name is Shalem Deitch, and, um, I was the owner or, or, uh, partner in the, in the, uh, in the unit.
All right. Any other questions, comments from members of the Commission? If there are none, I would like to ask for a motion to affirm the final order of the special magistrate. May I have that motion?
To.
Affirm the final order.
So moved.
Is there a second to affirm the final order? Going once? Going twice?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to affirm the final order of the special magistrate in full. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. And the final order of the special magistrate to pay in full is affirmed.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I would just like to take the opportunity to inform the, the property owner that, uh, there is a time period for that order, uh, that payment to be made, or it will revert to the original, uh, amount. So it, uh, time is of the essence.
All right, thank you. Moving on to twelve B, would you like to chime in, Mr. Cirillo?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, the City's Attorney's Office is requesting the, um, City Commission to authorize the scheduling of a private attorney-client session of the City Commission pursuant to section two eighty-six point oh-one-one-eight of Florida statutes to discuss pending litigation in the following case, City Boynton Beach, uh, versus J K M BTS Capital LLC, Palm Beach County Superior Court, case number fifty-dash twenty twenty C A oh-one-two-seven-eight-zero X X X X M B. Uh, those in attendance are listed in the explanation on the request, and the request tonight is for the City Commission to approve the scheduling of this, but to a date certain down the road, once you have your new commissioner, and we can, uh, schedule it, um, in coordination, perhaps bring it back with some suggested dates on that. It's, it's, it needs to be, happen soon, but nothing imperative on that. Um, and for the new commissioners, this is a process we have to go through in order to meet behind closed doors. The first step is that the attorney has to request the City Commission to, um, to authorize the scheduling of that meeting. Um, and then we proceed with scheduling that meeting, um, down the road.
Understood, and to be clear, the, the motion would be to approve the request, and then after the fifth member of the Commission is seated, then we can set a final date.
That's correct. We will work to schedule that later on down the road.
May have a motion to approve twelve B. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, the ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That brings us to Future Agenda Items, and earlier we spoke about adding a workshop to discuss the ARP funds and the possibilities of ARP. And to just generally update, uh, all the members of the Commission. And that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting.
All right.
And it's not even ten o'clock. I can't believe it. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Have a great night, everybody, and thank you.